Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed, and it will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Please only use the chat box to type "hand up", only to be placed in the queue to be recognized. Please remember to turn on your microphone and camera when you are recognized to speak. Turn off your camera and mic otherwise. I will ask for mics to be muted when you do not have the floor. We have guests online tonight, and I would like to extend a very warm welcome to each one of them. The First Order of Business: Land Acknowledgement, Opening Prayer, National Anthem, and Oath of Citizenship. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today, is rich in the history and modern traditions
of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe
to the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding you greatly
are steeped in Indigenous history.
As we gather today on these treaty land,
our Catholic social teachings
call us in solidarity
with our Indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honour and respect.
The four directions.
Waters, plants, animals,
and ancestors
that walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledge and thank
the Mississaugas of the credit First Nation
for being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Tokiba, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Lord, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, Lord, as we gather here today, fill our minds and our mouths to praise you. May we be guided by your work, wisdom, and teachings so that we may glorify you. Let us show respect and love for one another, continually working towards the common good through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. If you could all join in the singing of our national anthem.
Moving on to the First Order of Business: Motion adopted in camera. Vice Chair Agnew, could you please read the motions adopted in camera?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. There's only one motion adopted in camera, and I'm going to give my OAC French a bit of a run here. So let me go ahead and read it, sorry in advance for how butchered this might be. Resolve the Halton Catholic District School Board approve the central terms and conditions of employment contained within the memorandum of settlement and attached appendices dated December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, made between the Principals and Vice Principals Association comprised of Association des Directions et direction, a joint de école Franco-Ontario, ADFO, the Catholic Principals Council Ontario, and the Ontario Principals Council OPC, and the Association des councils scolaires de école, told you, publiques de l'Ontario, ACEPO, Association Franco-Ontiarien de concierges scolaires catholiques, AFO-CSC, the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association, OST, OCSTA, and the Ontario Public School Boards Association, OPSBA, and agreed to by the Crown. For you that the approval of the motion of the central terms be reported to OCSTA.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. We do not have any information received in cameras, so we will move on to the next order of business, and that's approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Trustee O'Brien, I see your hand is up.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move that I move that the delegation called Caring Catholic Parents by Mr. Freire, Mr. Hayden, and Mr. Jellichy added to the list of delegations this evening.
So you moved that the delegation have be added to item six point oh, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, that's what I'm moving, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any other additions? Can you, so the trustee O'Brien, can you just clarify, read about the
Sure. Mr. Chair, these three rate pairs mentioned to me that they felt the balance of delegations was one-sided, six pro flag, two against, um, I have to agree with them. In order to debate this motion fully, I believe we need to have a representation from our stakeholders that represents the common feeling. And six to two does not represent that. We can see that from the emails that have come to us. So these three men are on standby, ready to delegate tonight.
Okay, what's the title, trustee O'Brien? I didn't catch that the first
It's called Caring Catholic Parents.
Okay, uh, do we have any other additions?
Um, Mr. Chair. My hand is up, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, 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 my mistake, my mistake. I will go to Vice Chair Agnew. Vice Chair Agnew. Uh, I would like to call on Parliamentarian Kapoor. Parliamentarian Kapoor, are you there?
Yes, Chair, good evening.
Parliamentarian Kapoor, I'd like to ask whether we can add delegations as per our policy? Do we have an option, and how do we handle it from here?
Uh, well, Chair, uh, Bylaw nine point seven, and I apologize for turning my head, I've got it on the side, reports items not included on the agenda shall be handled in the following manner, at the start of the board meeting shall be handled in the following manner. Any item for discussion or information only may be included on the agenda with the consent of two-thirds of members present and eligible to vote. There's a different requirement for items requiring action or policy decisions. It would appear that this is as a delegation, an item for discussion or information, even though you will have a action item of a reply. So, um, if you
Delegation is not in order. Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Pardon me?
The addition of a delegation
You're adding an item to the, the, the motion is in addition, is to add an item to the agenda. Uh, the question is whether it requires a two-thirds vote to add this particular item or unanimous vote to add this particular item at this time. Uh, and that is whether it, the reply would be an action item.
Okay, so that would be unanimous.
That would require unanimous consent is the advice.
Okay, so, so let's decide on this one item. One, we shall move or decide on this item whether we can add it. We'll take it to a vote, and then shall come back to the agenda. Vice Chair Agnew, how do you vote?
Uh, I'm opposed, Mr. Chair. I haven't, I don't have a script, I haven't seen anything about it, so unfortunately I have to oppose.
Okay, I'll, I'll take the vote anyway. Uh, trustee De Rosa?
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Uh, trustee Guzzo?
Opposed, I also have not seen any scripts in regards to
Thank you, trustee Antamasi?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Antonada?
Oh, no worries.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Master Hammer?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Tokiba?
Opposed.
So we have four in favor, four opposed, and uh, and so it's not unanimous, so the motion fails. We cannot add this item to the delegations. I will move down the list to Thank you. Uh, moving down the list to Vice Chair Agnew, Vice Chair Agnew?
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I don't, I, I'm, I wanted to bring something up with my fellow trustees. I don't know, I'm assuming a lot of you have probably seen the letters that have been sent um, to the ministry from various boards with respect to um, the back-to-school protocols and just the back-to-school measures that are taking place. Um, so I was hoping to see if I could have, um, you know, consent from the trustees to go ahead and send a letter on our behalf, and not necessarily have to go through adding it as an agenda item and doing that motion. Um, and just be able to add um, that we would send a letter to the ministry expressing um, our opinions on the return to school piece.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I will ask the trustees, I will go around the table, and I will ask the trustees if they are in agreement to add this item. Trustee De Rosa?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
The item is to add
No, I'm, I'm opposed, this deserves, uh, input
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Like everything else.
Thank you, thank you. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Antonada?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I really need to ask a question before I vote to Vice Chair Agnew.
Sure. They called the vote, but I will give you this question.
Thank you, I couldn't get it in before you called the vote. Um, trustee Agnew, um, this is an item to add to the agenda to discuss sending a letter, right? To discuss what we see as a board, would we send to the ministry, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, um, yeah, you know, the other way we could do it is we could certainly take a look at the, um, letters that have, that have currently been sent to the ministry. They're all fairly similar to one another. Um, you know, we could certainly ask Communications to draft something up for us and, and send it around to the group to review prior to sending out, uh, or we could add it to the agenda for discussion. So just trying to simplify the process as school is starting back tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, and thanks for humorin' me, so I'll vote in favor of adding it.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Uh, Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Master Hammer?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
So we have five in favor, three opposed, it's not unanimous, so we shall not add this item to the agenda. Moving down the list
Mr. Chair, point of order, that item gets added to the agenda because it received two-thirds majority. So it can be added to the agenda, but no action can result from it.
Uh, we are looking, I think, for an action item, do you want to add it as an information item?
No.
No, so, so we shall not add that, uh, thank you, trustee Antamasi, uh, was a good suggestion.
So is she, is trustee Agnew withdrawing her?
It failed.
It failed. It failed, trustee Antamasi, so we shall move down the list.
No, it did not fail, Mr. Chair, it passed. Two-thirds allow it to be added to the agenda. You achieved two-third vote. Now, if trustee Agnew wishes to withdraw it, please ask her if she wishes to withdraw it.
Thank you, trustee Antamasi. This was requested to be an action item, which had to be unanimous, but it's not. So we are now moving down the speaker's list, trustee De Rosa, you have
But it automatically gets added to the agenda with
You do not have the flow, trustee Antamasi, you do not have the flow. Trustee De Rosa, do you have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Um, may I raise a point of privilege, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
It relates to the agenda, it relates to the agenda.
Go ahead, trustee, uh, De Rosa.
Yeah, I have a, I have a, a problem with, with the fact that out of nine delegations, only two take a position, and the other six or seven take another position.
Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm compelled, Mr. Chair, to listen
to a balanced view of, uh, the issues being discussed, irrespective of what I did not.
Trustee De Rosa? I would like to, I would like, I would like to interject. Trustee De Rosa, I would like to interject. A point, this is not a point of privilege. Okay, so this is your opinion. So at present, we are discussing at present, trustee De Rosa, we are discussing additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. So if you have any of those, please pick up.
Yes, I do. Is that I can't make, I can't make a balanced evaluation of the arguments in the, um, in the delegations that are going to take place because I don't have an equal number for and equal number against.
Fair enough.
And that impairs my decision, Mr. Chair. I'd like to know on what basis you have chosen to the delegations. It's
Trustee De Rosa, we are at the point, we are addition, we are, we are at the point, we are, we are doing additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. Do you have any additions, deletions, or corrections? If you do not
I would add an equal number of delegations for and against.
Okay. So do you have any item to be added to the agenda? I will take it to a vote, and then we'll decide. So do you have an item to be added to the agenda?
I've just given it to you, uh, um, Mr. Chair. You have all the delegation submissions, I don't. What I'm saying is, um, my request is that you balance the number of delegation for and against.
So we do not have an item, we shall now move on down the list. Uh, trustee Antamasi, you have your hand up. Do you have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I wish to speak to a point of order first, and I do have five notices of motion.
State your point of order first, trustee Antamasi.
My point of order relates to nine point seven, which the parliamentary, which the parliamentarian alluded to. Trustee Agnew put something forward to be added to the agenda. We did not achieve unanimous, as such, it cannot be an action item. If we would have received unanimous, the letter would have been sent. As such, that particular item goes onto the agenda because it achieved two-thirds majority. I draw your attention to nine point seven.
Thank you, trustee Antamasi. I have ruled that the item will not go on the agenda because it was introduced as an action item, which required unanimous, uh, consent. We did not receive unanimous consent, so that's my ruling. So your only option
Your ruling is incorrect because the trustee cannot choose
Are you questioning trustee Antamasi?
Yes, I'm appealing your, I'm, I'm appealing your decision, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, you can appeal, do you have a second to appeal? Do you have a second, trustee Antamasi?
You have to call it out, Mr. Chair, you don't
I will, I will second, Mr. Chair.
We have trustee Antamasi appealing the ruling of the chair regarding the letter not being on the agenda. Uh, and trustee De Rosa is second
I will second to put it on, on the table for discussion.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I will now take it to a vote.
Can, I have a point of privilege, Mr. Chair. What, what was the final vote for trustee Agnew's? Uh, I think there might be a misunderstanding.
So the final vote was five in favor, three opposed. So it was not unanimous. Thank you.
And for a two-thirds, for a two-thirds majority, we need six in favor?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can you
We have an appeal on the table, trustee Antamasi, I've called the vote. Okay, so trustee
Mr. Chair, I withdraw my appeal.
We, we are taking the vote anyway, trustee Antamasi, I called the vote. Trustee Antamasi, how do you vote?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella, how do you vote?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, point of clarification, we're voting on an appeal, just please clarify.
We are voting on the appeal on my decision that the item will not be added as an information item.
Okay, can you come back to me, please?
Okay, trustee O'Antonada?
This is the appeal risen by trustee Antamasi
Correct.
regarding the vote, is that correct, your decision on the vote?
Correct.
Um, I'm opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee O'Brien?
Opposed, Mr. Chair.
Uh, trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Master Hammer?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiba?
Opposed.
So we have two in favor, we have six opposed, the appeal fails. Uh, we shall now move on down the list, once again, for the approval of the agenda. Trustee De Rosa
Mr. Chair, I still have the floor insofar as I was giving notices of motions.
Okay, I'll give it that, I'll give that to you, trustee Antamasi, state your notices of motions.
So my notices of motion, Mr. Chair, stem from our last meeting, January. First meeting in January, first one is be it resolved that the Secretary for the Board as Director of
Sorry, trustee Antamasi, just the title, please.
Uh, trust, uh, you have them, Secretary Daly has them, and
So
so does Rosie.
So trustee Antamasi.
I, I will read it for you, be it resolved.
Just the title, just the title, trustee Antamasi. Just the title.
Director of Education Report on the Executive Compensation Increases from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. Rosie, you got that? So that will be placed under item ten point five. Moving on to your next item, trustee Antamasi.
Uh, ADR Code of Conduct Report Be Referred to the Minister in the Embitment.
Next item, Rosie, got that? Okay, ten point seven, that, that will be item ten point six, we'll move on to ten point seven, your next
Senior staff reviews.
Okay, that, that will be ten point seven, your next item, trustee Antamasi.
Senior staff salary expenses as per the revised estimates.
Thank you, that will be ten point eight. Trustee Antamasi, anything else?
Posting of salary increases to the CEC, non-union staff.
Sorry, Rosie, can you repeat the title again, please?
Posting of non-union staff salary increases on the board's website.
Okay. That will be item ten point nine.
Thank you.
Trustee Antamasi, I see trustee De Rosa's hand, trustee De Rosa, do you have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, I've said what I have to say.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. We shall now move to a recorded uh, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I need a mover.
Murphy.
Trustee Murphy moves, I need a second, please.
Trustee Gusto?
Trustee Guzzo seconds, I'll go to a recorded vote. Uh, trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Antonada?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Master Hammer?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm opposed, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi?
In favor, Mr. Chair.
And so we have five in favor, three opposed. The agenda is approved, the motion carries. Moving on to the next order of business, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared? Seeing none, we shall move on to the next order of business, and that's presentations. Item four point one, senior staff updates. Director Daly, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, we have two senior staff updates, one with regards to our specialist high-skills major or schism programs, that will be Superintendent Del Soro. And, uh, secondly, an update on our project around culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy, and that will be delivered by our Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity, Ms. Jayamar. So welcome to both our senior staff to share some of their good work this evening.
Good evening. In secondary schools across Halton Catholic, students are building brighter futures through the specialist high-skills major programs in many varied and exciting, high-demand professions. These innovative programs are an important part of Halton Catholic District School Board's commitment to providing all students with learning choices and opportunities that genuinely meet the students' needs, interests, and aspirations, and ensuring that Halton Catholic Schools help every student achieve their highest potential. Specialist high-skills majors allow students to focus on a career path that matches their skills and interests while meeting the requirements of the Ontario Secondary School Diploma, the OSSD. Schism students achieve two red seals on their OSSD, their high school diploma seal and their schism Their high school diploma seal and their schism major seal. Students receive the schism seal when they complete a specific bundle of eight to 10 courses in the student-selected field or major, when they earn valuable industry certifications, including first aid and CPR qualifications, and when they gain important skills on the job through cooperative education placements. Schism begins in grade eleven and twelve, and ideally, it is best to enter a schism program by the end of grade ten. With the help and the support from guidance counselors and teachers, by the end of grade ten, students can declare a schism pathway based on their interests, their passions, and their aspirations. Schism is intended for students who are heading for apprenticeship training, college, university, or the workplace. Students who are wanting to identify or explore or refine their career goals and make informed choices about what their next steps are after secondary school. Schism allows students to field test their careers, so they can see if they wish to continue in that specialist field or discover other opportunities. There are five components in the schism program. One, course selection based on the specialist high skills major. Two, certificates based on workshops geared towards student schism that students can add to their resumes and help them get a job or give them merit in applying to apprenticeship programs or college programs or university programs. Three, they gain experiential learning, so students can explore the industries that speak to their schism. Or go on field trips and explore activities specific to their schism. Four, they have a reach-ahead experience, so students have these opportunities to meet with employers in the sector to help determine if the students' passions and their interests match their duties and their responsibilities of the field. And lastly, students contribute to a sector-partner experience in which they have real-world problem-solving with tips from sector partners within the community. Students benefit from a schism by building their resumes, learning skills, and experience, helping them understand more deeply who they are and what they wish to do as a career. Having many opportunities to build on their interests in a meaningful way and become lifelong learners. With an additional red seal on their diplomas, schism students are eligible for scholarships to post in secondary education that speaks to their field of interest. In short, students have the opportunities to gain important skills on the job with actual employers at skilled training centers and at school. If you look at this slide, you will see which school offers which sector schism program across the district. Currently, we have eight hundred and thirteen students enrolled in schism programs across all secondary schools in Hilton Catholic District School Board, with the exception of St. Keteri, as it is a new high school with only grade nine students, and schism begins at grade eleven. We have eight new schism programs offered in this school year alone. The grand success of this Hilton Catholic District School Board schism programs is based on the commitment of every student enrolled, every schism champion lead teacher, the school administration, guidance departments, and the outstanding leadership and support of the schism consultant, Mark Ives. It is their commitment and hard work that builds the success of schism across our district. Let us look at a Hilton Catholic District School Board construction schism video that's based on student and teacher voice as an example of how schism speaks to students' interests, passions, and aspirations led and supported by champion schism teachers.
I started the schism program because it gave extra avenue, extra pathways. Didn't pretty much thought, great, even, not, I want to do, but I was thinking like trade seems more like skills-based, hands-on, that's kind of how I learned.
I want to go into civil engineering.
I took this course just to like get a bit of an introduction to it, and I ended up really enjoying it.
I was also very hesitant to join the program because I knew that maybe I'd be the only girl in the class. I, I didn't really let that stop me because I was like, who cares? It's my future.
These type of classes, they, they open up opportunities for people. The hands-on learning aspect of it and learning how to do things and acquiring skills, even not just for like career, but for life in general.
So I liked how you were always moving around and you weren't ever really bored in the class because you were always working on something.
The vibe was very positive. They've really made my quad master a really unforgettable one.
Having the program means it gives me more opportunity to offer students things that they wouldn't have got otherwise. The biggest advantage for a schism program is the co-op aspect, reach-ahead opportunities, field trips, different things that are over and above what a student gets in a normal class.
It's just a good program that gets you ready for a lot of skills.
I feel like this course has set me up a lot already.
The red seal will help you get into more internships.
You really want to go into anything related to construction. I would heavily recommend this program.
If you want the opportunity to make your high school experience about you, really find out the programs that are available at your school. And that doesn't mean go through the book and look at the different course codes. It means go and find out what a schism program really is.
Once again, very excited and very thrilled with the amount of work that's been happening across our system to really support student voice and choice, and thankful to the great teacher leaders who create these great learning environments. Thank you.
Good evening, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to share some updates regarding our nearly year-long project to deepen our work on culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy. The project was focused on, next slide, please Andrea, thank you, building libraries to affirm the dignity and inherent value, previous slide, please Andrea, value of every student in Catholic secondary school. The design of the project was driven by student voice. We gathered student voice on their perception of representation of diverse historically underrepresented voices and communities in schools. So the video that we're about to share documents the process, focus, and outcomes of the project within the context of libraries. Can I please request you to play the video? I'm excited to share a little bit about the project that we're about to look at today, and that is building libraries to affirm the inherent dignity and value of every secondary student in our school board. So this is a funding that we received from the Ministry of Education, and that was to really intensify our work on culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy. We have, as a board, committed to this work based on our commitment to supporting every student to achieve, believe, and belong. Library professionals have always been leaders in this work in making sure that their patrons see themselves represented in their materials and that everyone's welcome. CRRP work has three key focus areas. The first being about building on the lived experiences and identities of students, acknowledging that families and students bring knowledge, bring ways of knowing to education, and that we can co-create that knowledge. The second pillar is around helping students to develop and broaden their socio-political consciousness, so become really critical thinkers and to grow up to be responsible citizens. And this again aligns with our Catholic graduate expectations of supporting students to become responsible students who will then promote peace and justice. In April of twenty twenty, I believe, Seda was able to speak to our entire group, so forty-five elementary staff, ten secondary staff, twenty secondary staff, and all the staff at the Learning Resource Center were able to kind of have a really robust session on building a collection through an equity lens. Seda and I worked last summer on updating our collection development manual, which included then more equity-informed language. And I think that was very important to put it in the actual manual that guides the work of our collection development. And so we have the option to use localized subject headings in our records and the way we create our records. So we made a decision that yes, this is what the standard is in the world of libraries, but we choose as a board to use language that is more appropriate. So all of our secondary schools, our nine secondary schools participated in this project and participated in four days of really intense learning around the theoretical framework of CRRP and how it applies to libraries, understanding indigenous pedagogy, and again, its application to library, how to support two S L G P T Q students and have their dignity reflected in libraries, and how to center Black excellence and Black joy in libraries. So after this learning, the library staff then took this learning reflection and sharing and transformed that into action within their library spaces.
Well, in the past, libraries have always showcased different perspectives, but it is important to, to be more intentional about that.
The thing that stood out to me the most was one of our guest speakers, Samantha Peters, who talked a lot about intersectionality. And so Samantha gave me a deeper understanding of intersectionality and how different types of inequalities can work together to create unique experiences of discrimination. So this project really emphasized the importance of students being seen and seeing themselves reflected back in their library space. So I've added a lot of visual elements to help students see that I do value them and their identities.
Major takeaways from the CRRP training was the importance of listening to students and listening to other members and listening to the community. And from that, I've been able to grow our collection and I've set up special displays that I like to highlight and students seem to be responding very well to. I've interfiled our indigenous collection so that it is no longer segregated to its own selection as well. And now that is part of all of history and all of athletics and all of fiction. When we're building our collections, what we want to do is focus on more than just the struggles of the past. We want to be able to celebrate the voices and celebrate the achievements and the successes of all our, our students and all of our students' communities.
I think a big thing that stood out was having authentic voices in terms of literature, so making sure that books written about certain topics are written by the people who have the authority to speak on them. I also think that it's important to really highlight diverse literature. And I mean, we had that before, but one of the speakers, Samantha Peters, really emphasized when she was in school how impactful it was to see books that represented her. She felt like, that she felt seen, and that made her feel safer. And I think that's something that's a big takeaway. The library is for the kids, right? At the end of the day, no matter what I do, it's, it's their space and it should feel safe for them. It should feel like it represents them. The kids, they're teenagers, so they don't always verbalize things, but you do see it in terms of what they're signing out. So we'll pick books, we'll buy books based on that, and then students will sign them out, which is nice to see, you know? They'll like see that on the shelf and they'll be like, oh, I want to read this. And then I always ask them when they bring it back, like, how'd you like it? And they'll give their honest input. Sometimes it's a hit, sometimes it's like, eh, not, not the best. So their, their feedback is really important.
If our students only see one lived reality reflected in the books, that reality just gains momentum and that just becomes the one reality they know. We have a very racially diverse community. We have a gender diverse community. We have a number of students from different countries coming to us. And if they only see one type of story, that's not really fair to them. There are so many things that have changed visually in our spaces. I mean, even if you go into our schools, every one of our schools has a rainbow walkway. Every one of our schools has the seven feathers. Equity work is work that is not a nice-to-have, it's a need-to-have. So librarians have done an amazing, you know, effort at taking on this challenge, particularly during a very hard time during the pandemic. That equity-informed de-selection and the equity-informed selection of material has become very intentional. And I think that has to do directly with the work that we've done through CRRP, through, through Seda, and just the fact that the board has really made a intentional effort to have this work being done. Can I just request you to turn to the next slide, please Andrea? So I wanted to then end with student voice, and we had done, you know, pre-project and post-project surveys with students. And as can be seen from the infographic presented here, students did report an increase in representative materials in the library. The survey points to some additional intentionality required in representation of diverse ethnic and racial communities. And it also revealed that more students feel connected with staff in libraries towards the end of the project. And lastly, I wanted to, you know, say thank you to the planning committee, next slide, please, and the library staff for their wholehearted participation and support to the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustees. Do we have any questions? I see trustee O'Brien and trustee Bowie on the line. Trustee O'Brien, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Excellent presentations. First question to superintendent Del Serto. Superintendent Del Serto, if schism is not in your school, but it is say at a school across town, is transportation provided?
Thank you for the question, trustee O'Brien, and through you, Chair. I do not believe that transportation is provided if a student wishes to go to another school.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien.
And follow-up question, yes, to, to Seda. Seda, I heard in the presentation with your C C R P text selection that there is a de-selection process. Does that mean that there are books that actually have been taken out of the library?
Mrs. Jaraman?
Thank you so much for the question through you, Mr. Chair. So I, I understand that libraries are continuously looking at materials that might be outdated or no longer relevant or have older editions, and so they are de-selected in that process. I'm really happy to share that our manager for L R C, Ms. Linda Murray is also on the call with us. If she'd like to add to the specifics around the de-selection process, if you'd like to know a little bit more, maybe I-
Oh, be just an example of a book that's been de-selected.
Absolutely, and, and I, I'm happy to speak to that de-selection or weeding, as we call it in the library world. It's just exactly that, like a garden is weeded. So we, we do the same thing with our books, and that can be anything from something that is very well-loved.
Okay.
Got a clarification question, do you want?
Yeah, can you give an example, book that's been de-selected?
Linda? Can't hear? You're muted? You're muted? Okay, trustee O'Brien will come back, will come back.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, moving down the speaker's list, we have trustee Bowie and trustee Masti Hammer. Trustee Bowie, please go ahead, you're the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Through you, I'd just like to say that shown in that video was my own personal school's library. And I have to say that students have noticed the change. My friend and I helped hang up some of the posters in our new Karen McBride conference room, which is dedicated to Indigenous author Karen McBride. And we're really happy with our new collection, and I'd just like to thank senior staff and the committee for all of their hard work in putting this in our schools. Our new libraries look great.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. We will move down to the speaker's list to trustee Masti Hammer.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank superintendent Del Serto for the schism programs. I'm actually part of the schism program in my school, but I was just wondering, I know my teacher has been awesome with planning virtual field trips, but how teachers are doing those training and field trips- but how teachers are doing those training and field trips through online and how they're navigating through that?
Superintendent Del Cerdo, is that?
I'm sorry, if I understand the question correctly, you're asking how are teachers working through the field trips, doing it virtually? Or when are we going to get back to doing actual field trips?
Yeah, like how they're doing it virtually.
I'm sorry, is the question, how are they doing it virtually?
Sorry, let me rephrase that, sorry. The second question, like, when do we think we're going to get back to those field trips?
Yeah, that's a very good...
Go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Chair, that's a very good question. I appreciate it. Right now, because we're governed with a number of public health restrictions and the employer's restrictions with their public health, part of it is that we're working through all that. As soon as we get the green light to go ahead and move forward and we get the employer's consent with the sector piece, then most definitely we're moving in that direction.
Awesome, thank you very much. Do you have follow-up?
Yeah, I'll go. No, I got it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Do you still want clarification, any question, or you would like to...
Actually, Mr. Chair, maybe I could just direct us back to Seda. Seda, would it ever be possible for the trustees to see these selection and deselection lists? Like, have they ever come back to the board? Because I know in the past, we have looked at textbooks, I don't know.
Come on, do you have the information or can you get it?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I can definitely ask Linda Murray for that. I don't have a list of all the books that are selected and de-selected, but definitely I can find out if that's possible to get you up with that.
Thank you. It would be great if you can email it to trustee. Thank you. Moving down the speaker's list, we have trustee Antamasi and trustee DeRosa. Trustee Antamasi, you're on the floor.
Chair, to Secretary Daly. So, Secretary, the role of trustees is fairly entrenched. It's fairly well-spelled out in the Education Act. The board decides what books from a list that staffs provides. How is this changing? It would seem to me that if Ms. Jaraman has to say in which books or she selects the books or looks over the books, are we turning over that role to her office?
Thank you, trustee Antamasi. I'd like to request all who are on this call, put your name... Sorry, I'd like to request everyone to put your name in the chat box if you have something to say, rather than putting a hand up. Just type "hand" in the chat box because I really cannot see whose hand that is, okay? So I see a couple of hands there, but please. So trustee Antamasi, I'll forward your question to Director Daly.
Thanks for the question and thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Curriculum Services Department oversees, ultimately oversees purchases in our libraries. We have a senior manager of library services. We ask consultants, teachers, other senior staff to play a role in determining and helping students for that matter, in determining what we think are appropriate resources in our school libraries.
Trustee Antamasi, I'll ask Ms. Jaraman to jump in. She hasn't got something to say on the same topic.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to clarify, I'm not the one selecting the books. So as was mentioned by Director Daly, that is done by the library staff in consultation with the administrators. But just wanted to clarify, I'm not the one making those decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Jaraman. So trustee Antamasi, you have a follow-up question, if you have.
Seda, I'm happy to hear that, through you, Mr. Chair. So my follow-up question is, who is "we"? Simply because the purchase of books is the responsibility of trustees, so it would seem to me that the proper protocol would be that the books selected, all books selected, come to the board for approval, after which we give direction to our secretary, which is yourself, who then fills out an RFB to purchase the books. Is that not correct?
Director Daly?
Thank you. Oops. Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the process that trustee Antamasi laid out is the one that we typically use when we're making system purchases for things like geography textbooks, et cetera. In terms of our school libraries, schools and libraries are allocated budget to make those purchases in consultation with our curriculum department and also in consultation at the school level, certainly at the secondary school level with the curriculum leaders in the school would be the department heads.
Thank you, Director Daly.
Got a clarification, Mr. Chair?
Okay, trustee Antamasi, you have clarification question?
So, Secretary Daly, are you saying to me that staff has the sole authority to review and accept books without and order books without coming to the board? Is that what I heard?
Director Daly?
That's the process that we follow, that's what you heard.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Daly. We will now move on down the speaker's list. We have trustee DeRosa, trustee Johannotta, trustee Guzzo. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to reiterate trustee O'Brien's request for a fulsome list of books decommissioned and new books commissioned on both sides. I think the board needs to see that list, thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeRosa. Trustee Johannotta, trustee Johannotta, you're on the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a comment. The presentation on, both presentations were amazing. I learned everything I needed to know about Chisholm and my kids went through the system. And I just wanted to point out, the one comment that one of our students said that she felt a good vibe when she's in a program, I think that speaks thousands about what a successful program that is. I wish some of my classes, when I was in high school, I felt the vibe, so, well done.
Thank you, trustee Johannotta. Seeing no other questions here, I'd just like to make a comment and thank Director Daly and his staff for the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. Some great things happening at HCSB, thank you. Moving on to the next order of business, student trustee presentation. Student trustees, Bowie, Master Yamar, and Tokiba, please begin your presentation.
The student trustee report on equity and inclusion, next slide please. So the student senate 2021, 2022 vision. Our vision has been particularly informed by a desire to fight for equity and inclusion of all students in our school. In terms of increasing isolation, we recognize the importance of ensuring that all students feel welcome in our school. Our vision is to ensure that through the affirmation of the human dignity that our schools become a place where all students feel like they can achieve, believe, and belong. We wish to not only highlight the voices of students that have historically been marginalized in our communities, but ensure that we model Christ-like leadership in our efforts to create an environment of compassion, kindness, humility, and faith in the HCSB.
Thank you so much, Gabriella. So we're presenting this report to you guys today, following some requests from the student senate. Just summarizing our efforts on equity and inclusion throughout the past year, why the student senate feels it's important and what we're doing to further efforts of equity and inclusion in our schools. So at our last general senate meeting, we did have some conversations surrounding equity inclusion with our senators, based on the work that they'd been doing. And we polled our senators, so I will be going through the achieving part of the results of that poll. So to start off, we asked our senators what their top priorities of the year were as student leaders. So we summarized sort of the five key points that we saw here. The first was making sure that the voice of all students is heard. Our senators expressed a particular desire to make sure that they're representing large portions of our student body, reaching out to students on issues that were important to them, which we were very, very happy to see as student trustees. The second was ensuring that there are spaces created for students to feel comfortable and safe to express themselves and their opinions. Again, we pride ourselves at the student senate on making sure that it's an open forum for discussions where students feel safe to express their views. The third is engaging our community and working together through these difficult times. As I'm sure you all know, COVID-19 has hit students hard and it's hit our school environments very hard. So we are looking forward to helping to further causes of community during these times. The fourth is ensuring that all students in all levels of their academic journey have enough resources to grow and be successful. This year, as we've mentioned in previous student trustee reports, we're very happy to report that we have one of the largest student senates ever and we have the most grade nine students ever to be on senate, ensuring that we're hearing the voice of all of our students. And the last one is our students expressed a particular desire to make sure that there are sufficient mental and physical health resources available to all students within the HCSB. Next slide. Next slide, please, Rosie, sorry. Okay, perfect, sorry, mine was lagging. So there are three actions that the student senate has taken thus far to further efforts of equity and inclusion, particularly within our schools. The first one was writing a letter to the board regarding the position of non-Catholic student trustees. So in early fall, I believe it was September, our September general meeting, the student senate expressed a desire to write to the board regarding equitable opportunities for students belonging to diverse religious traditions and backgrounds. So we helped them achieve that. As student trustees, we've been particularly committed this year to ensuring that we empower the student senates to pursue projects that are important to them. So we've given full reins to the student senators to help guide our vision and our actions for this year. The second thing that we're doing is that the senate has formed an ad hoc committee with the goals of promoting and spreading awareness of Indigenous Studies course options for our secondary students. Currently, that committee is working with Sheri at the board to create some promotional videos for these courses to help drum up some excitement surrounding them ahead of course selections. And the third thing that we're doing that is being spearheaded by our Equity Inclusion Standing Committee that we're all very excited about, is the Elementary Equity Project. So through workshops created to younger students regarding relevant equity issues facing our community, the Equity and Inclusion Standing Committee intends for senators to connect with elementary students in our schools this spring to discuss diverse perspectives and foster attitudes of inclusion, empathy, and respect amongst their peers as they prepare to enter secondary school. So we've seen particularly that through COVID-19, our schools, we've heard reports from senators that our schools are becoming increasingly isolated, which has led to increase in bullying incidents and hate speech. So this is a way for us as the student senate to really take on a mentorship role with our elementary peers, make some connections with them, foster that sense of teamwork, and work with them as they head into secondary school to foster attitudes of community and empathy. So I mentioned that at our last general meeting, we had discussions surrounding equity inclusion at our board. A big part of that was polling our senators to get sort of their perspectives on general issues regarding our boards. The first question that we asked the senate was, do you believe that our schools uphold the values of achieving, believing, and belonging? So 46% said yes, 35% said that they were unsure, and 19% said no. So while the majority of students did say yes, we are looking that hopefully through our efforts this year that we can get that number even higher. Always aim for 110%. So that's one thing that we will be working on as a student senate. And then next, yeah. And then this was a very important question to us as student trustees, because this is sort of our performance report on how we've been doing. But we asked the senate, how strongly do you agree with the following statement? The HCSB listens to student voice. We set the marker as one being strongly agree, five being strongly, or one being strongly disagree, five being strongly agree. You can see the specific answers down below. We will see that the average answer here was below three, which was meant that strongly disagree and disagree were more weighted than all of the other categories. So the average answer was a 2.92. We can see that the majority of students responded neither agree nor disagree and that the percentage of students who responded either disagree or strongly disagree was higher than those, the proportion of students that responded agree or strongly agree. So our senators have expressed a desire that the HCSB continue to seek out the student perspective and continue to consider students as an important stakeholder in decision-making. So as our mandate, as student trustees in our mandate, we've committed this year to making sure that we really amplify student voice and we try as much as possible to get it involved in all of the decisions that are being made here at the board table. I think, next slide, thank you. I can't see the screen changing, so I'm not sure if that's on my end. But I do believe I will be turning it over to Gabriella now. So if everyone else can see that, we'll go for it. Thank you all and looking forward to a wonderful meeting.
I am unable to see it as what I just saw. Thank you so much, Rosie. Hopefully everyone can see me okay. So one of our main things in the student senate is how can we put leadership in Jesus' example and how we can follow Christ-like examples? So as student trustees and members of the student senate, we desire to model Christ-like leadership and humility in every endeavor, putting personal views aside with the purpose of advocating for all students within the HCSB. The student senate works to model Christ-like leadership with emphasis on inclusion and uplifting our community, demonstrate the Catholic graduate expectation, form a positive learning environment that relies on collaboration and respect, and advocate for students with the intention of contributing for the common good and really bring our community together. So compassion and inclusion, how it impacts Catholic education. A large concern of the student senate is that of students feeling unwelcome and unsupported in our school. And as a result, either not choosing to continue with their Catholic education or feeling isolated and disconnected from our school community. We asked our senators, have you ever witnessed a friend, peer, or peer choose against receiving their education from the HCSB because of fear they wouldn't be accepted for who they are? So 28% responded yes, 42% responded no, and 30% responded unsure. A lot of people said no for the majority, but I think a really big example is 30% saying unsure because it shows that after elementary school, they might not see their peers come into high school, but they just don't know the reason why, and this could be one of them. Next slide, please. So fostering inclusion and reaffirming human dignity. As written in the catechism of the Catholic Church, 1702, "The divine image is present in every man. It shines forth in the communion of persons in the likeness of the union of the divine persons amongst themselves." And on 1931, "Respect for the human person proceeds by way of respect for the principle that everyone should look up his neighbor without any exception as another self, above all bearing in mind his life and the means necessary for living it with dignity. Knowledgeation could by itself do away from the fears, prejudices, and altitudes of pride and selfishness without obstruct the establishment of truly fraternal society. Such behavior will cease only through the charity that finds in every man a neighbor, a brother." We believe that it is crucial for the HCSB to foster united communities in our schools that align with the inherent human dignity of every student that walks through the doors of the HCSB. We believe in asking with compassion as role models for all our students, promoting the divine image of all of our students in our Catholic student community and promoting empathy and effort to create shared understanding in our school. All possible. Alicia.
Thank you, next slide, please. Concerns of inclusive environments in our schools. So upon our poll, we received information that our senators have reported environments of anxiety and isolation perpetuated by COVID-19 in our schools and increased use of hate speech, derogatory language, and instances of bullying or exclusion. These have been issues that we've been hearing a lot even throughout the rest of the year. The students express admiration for the current efforts that students, our HCSB and staff are making to ensure that our classrooms are equitable, inclusive environments, while still acknowledging that there is still work that must continue to be done. Next slide. Student experience. We asked our senators, how often have you experienced an environment where you do not feel included or accepted? The average was around 2.42, which meant that the average person experienced an environment where they didn't feel included or accepted at least once to sometimes. I think it was really concerning to see that over 5% of people had experienced an environment where they didn't feel accepted every day. So that's definitely something we want to focus on as a student senate. As well, when we asked, approximately 29% of senators shared that they had experienced discrimination from a staff member at HCSB. Students express experiences with microaggressions, comments made by their teachers and other staff members that made them feel unwelcome, and instances of bullying by their peers that weren't addressed by staff. Next slide, please. The next steps. The next steps, the Pride Flag and LGBTQ plus inclusion. Recently, the Student Senate has advocated that they have an interest in whether the HCDSB decides to fly the Pride Flag at our schools. We asked the senators, how strongly do you support the flying of the Pride Flag in schools? The average answer was four point three one, the overwhelming majority saying strongly in favor. Next slide, please. So these are just some of the senators' concerns. As student trustees, it's our main priority that student voice is being heard, and we really wanted to take this time to express some of their concerns. Jesus' teachings and the Bible taught us unconditional love for all and giving voice to those who do not have one. If at least one person feels unsafe, that is one too many, and to ensure they feel supported is to follow the Word of Christ. In the past year, two S LGBTQ plus community has spoken up and wishes to be more represented in Catholic schools, including HCDSB. And they have felt ostracized and alone from staff and peers. The next quote, I believe the LGBTQ plus community is well represented, respected, and treated at schools across the board. Numerous displays of acceptance were placed throughout schools. Therefore, I believe that flying the Pride Flag isn't the right plan of action. Instead, a better motion would be to implement more LGBTQ plus curriculum and teaching so students can actually learn and understand instead of just glancing at a flag upon arrival. Our next statement. One flag should be flown outside the HCDSB schools, and that should be the Canadian flag. It's not a lack of LGBTQ plus pride, and I'm not saying that it shouldn't be flown in schools. Absolutely inside, that is acceptable. It's just disheartening that we are taking away everything that the Canadian flag represents, hope and prosperity. No matter who you are and who you are, when you are in Canada, you are presented by the flag. The Canadian flag has been through triumphs and falls from graces, but without it, we as a society would be absolutely nothing. This doesn't even mention the brave individuals that salute the flag and have given their lives for it. Please display the Pride Flag inside classrooms, however, do not disgrace our great flag by putting another one on it. The next quote, flying the flag would prove to your students at the HCDSB is truly a place for all. Not flying the flag only promotes a prejudiced community and allows for homophobia to manifest in our schools. Next slide. From what I have heard from my two S LGBTQ plus friends in the Board, they often don't feel safe or accepted enough within our school community to be their true selves when they're at school. It is important that we work towards creating a school environment where our two S LGBTQ plus students feel safe, as without a sense of safety, students' well-being and mental health will be jeopardized. By doing this simple action of raising the Pride Flag at all of our schools, we will make our students feel much safer and wanted within our schools, knowing that their school supports them and their identity. Next quote, our Board prides itself on its inclusion, but I have found throughout my thirteen years within the Board, it is often just met with a lack of action. The Pride Flag is a motion that is direct, tangible way to support the ideal view, ironically enough, pride yourself on. To many, it is just a flag, but within this supposed simple thing, it demonstrates your public support for a group of people that have to or feel the need to hide who they are. The Pride Flag should not just be within the school, behind its closed doors. The entire point of such a symbol is to see it open in the wind, blowing through it unapologetically. The full list of statements can be found under the correspondence. We had an overwhelming amount received through our survey. Just to note that these were just some of the responses we polled to demonstrate all the different diverse perspectives of our Senate, but doesn't represent the proportionality of the agreement. Also, we chose not to put any of the names in the slideshow, but senators that did wish to have their names have been mentioned in the correspondence. Next slide, please. We also asked three of our committees to make statements, and these are the three committees that we believe really advocate for the issues surrounding equity inclusion. Raising the Pride Flag is a pivotal symbol for students of the two S LGBTQ plus community to feel supported on a systematic board level in the Board. Raising the Pride Flag is a simple but powerful action. As students of the School Board, we are working towards creating an environment where all students feel they belong and can be themselves. We aspire to be models of Christ through our actions and respect and embrace diversity in our school community. And this was said by our Equity Inclusion Standing Committee Chairs. The whole statement is also listed in the correspondence, along with the other statements from committees. I'll pass it over to Katie now to read the student well-being statement on the next slide.
Thank you so much, Alicia. As the Student Trustee in charge of the Student Wellbeing Committee, I'm happy to say that our Student Wellbeing Committee Chairs requested to have their statement included, along with Equity Inclusion and our Catholic Faith and Action Committees. So the following is their statement. Schools should be a place where students feel safe. Students feeling safe, accepted for who they are, and supported has a direct impact on their well-being and mental health. By flying the Pride Flag, we are showing students that we don't want them to be ashamed of and hide parts of their identity, but rather, we want them to show up as their authentic selves. By flying the Pride Flag, we are preaching the message that every student belongs and that we are committed to fostering a welcoming, nurturing, and safe environment. So I'd like to thank the Student Wellbeing Standing Committee Chairs for their statement. As Alicia said, I will echo it because we really want to make sure that we're highlighting the voice of our senators. We had over thirty-five statements, plus these three, submitted by members of our Student Senate who wished to speak on the matter. And all of those statements are listed in full in the correspondence that the Student Senate sent to the Board. So please take the time to take a look at that if you haven't already.
Lastly, I'll be reading the committee statement for the Catholic Faith and Action Committee. Love, a concept deeply rooted in Christian belief and a cornerstone in Catholic teaching. For each time a student at our Holton Catholic District School Board struggles with self-acceptance and finds difficulty receiving support, it is incredibly pertinent to our Catholic social teaching that we take responsibility and carry out justice for our fellow people. We're one human family, no matter our differentiating identities and ideologies. We're one body, individual members of one another, Romans twelve, four to eight. It is through demonstrating inclusion that we may love and respect all members of our family. Raising the Pride Flag is an opportunity to promote God's bountiful and unconditional love for all His children. On behalf of the HCDSB Catholic Faith and Action Standing Committee, we strongly encourage our Board to allow HCDSB schools to fly the Pride Flag to express our board's solidarity on students and members of the LGBTQ plus communities. So this is a statement from the HCDSB Student Senate Catholic Faith and Action Standing Committee, and we're so proud that this year it is the biggest one that we've had in the past couple of years. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. I think I tried to jump in a little early. Trustees, do we have any questions? I see trustee Yan Tomasi and trustee O'Brien. Trustee Yan Tomasi, you have the floor.
Through you, Chair. Excellent presentation, student trustees. Extremely well done. So my question goes back to the Faith and Action Committee. Can you tell me how many members we have on that committee now that are participating actively?
Trustee Bowie would like to ask the question, fill the question to someone.
Yes, I can answer that one. We currently have four students who are members of the Catholic Faith and Action Committee.
Yep, go ahead.
So thank you for that information. So we haven't been able to recruit anymore. There's no other interest. Is there a way to reach out to our senators to see who wishes to participate in this particular committee? Thank you.
We did have a, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, we did have a student senator who did elect to join the Catholic Faith and Action Committee, I think in December. So we went from three to four. Again, the Standing Committees is a relatively new structure. It was only implemented last year, and last year we had about half of our Senate meetings. So students are just sort of learning the structure of the committees, and definitely this summer and following Student Senator applications at the end of the year, we will be heavily promoting all of the committees, including Catholic Faith and Action, and making sure that we have our students engaged and ready to participate.
Thank you. On the speaker's list, we have trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this question is, by the way, great presentation, very well executed, very thoughtful. This question is to trustee Tokiwa on the Belonging pillar. One of your senators said that flying the Pride Flag is not the right course of action. Instead, a better motion would be to implement more LGBTQ plus curriculum. So my question to you is, do you see student voice as having an advisory role, the implementation of that curriculum?
Trustee Bowie?
I can answer that. I'm not sure I can speak on behalf of the student that made that statement, but I definitely think in the implementation of LGBTQ plus curriculum and teachings, there should be student consultation, especially with students in the LGBTQ community. As you know, I put student voice above everything else, for sure.
Thank you.
Brian, any follow-up question?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm good.
Okay, seeing that we do not have any more questions, I'd like to thank student trustees for your engagement with our student body and bringing their voice to the table and making our students heard. Thank you. We will now move on to the next order of business, and that's delegations. So we have eight delegations this evening. Our delegates are online, and I will let them know when to begin. Since we have several delegations tonight, I would like to go over a few basic rules, ground rules as per our policy I dash oh six, and hope we understand and follow them. Delegates will have precisely ten minutes to present, to do your presentation. There will be an alarm at nine minutes, and at the ten-minute mark, you will end your presentation. After the presentations, trustees will have three minutes to ask two clarifying questions, including responses based on the presentation only. Presenters are expected to maintain a level of decorum. The chair shall act as a moderator for each delegation, presentation, and will govern the questions from trustees, from the Board of Trustees. Trustees, you do not need to thank delegates, rather get to your questions directly. The chair will thank all delegates on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Moving on to declined delegations, item five point one, declined delegations. A total of nine delegations were declined for this evening's meetings, and trustees have been notified. Item five point two, flying the Pride Flag at HCDSB by Holton Parents for Change. Our first delegation this evening is from-
Mr. Chair, point order, can I ask a question? As it relates to our bylaws, we're only allowed five delegations. You chose to move it to nine, and yet you declined another nine delegations. Can you speak to that and the reason why you declined destinations? Please provide bylaw reasons for that.
Thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. Your point of order is well noted and accurate. So delegations have been accepted as per policy I dash oh six. The policy calls for up to five delegations to be accepted with additional delegations at the discretion of the chair. So I have exercised that discretion with the chair, discussed with the chair, vice chair, and director, and we decided to take three more.
Mr. Chair, so as part of my point of order, delegations are part of the approval of the agenda. That role belongs to the Board. Why wouldn't you have brought them, the ones that were declined for review by the Board and comment? Because we do, I'm not finished. We do approve the agenda, and we can add or subtract from the agenda as we choose. That is as a Board. Can you comment on that?
Thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. So as I said before, as when I responded to your point of order, policy I O six, very clear, that five delegations will be accepted with additional delegations at the discretion of the chair. The chair has used his discretion and taken up to eight delegates. Thank you.
But the chair does not approve the agenda.
I have, the chair has answered your question. We are moving on to the delegation. Thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. The agenda has been approved, by the way. And trustees, please do not put your comments in the chat box, put your hand up, and I will give you the floor. Thank you. So moving on to our first delegations, as I was speaking to that, our first delegation is from flying the Pride Flag HCDSB from Holton Parents of Change. You have ten minutes for the presentation, and you must stay on script. Part of tonight's Board Agenda package, I will now ask staff to assist me in keeping track of the time. Give me a second. Okay, are you ready, Rosie? Okay, do we have delegates? Yeah, you can start now.
Okay. Good evening, trustees and HCDSB staff. My name is Ian McCombe, and with me tonight is Kristy Dickinson from Holton Parents for Change. The delegation we are presenting tonight was created with assistance from individuals from the Positive Space Network, PSN, an affiliate of Rock focused on building community and creating safer spaces for two S LGBTQ plus youth. We are here tonight to discuss the staff report on supporting our diverse school community from the January fourth Board meeting, as well as trustee Agnew's motion on strengthening community relationships. Last spring, HCDSB voted against flying the Pride Flag. During the course of the debate, there were many harmful things said in letters of correspondence during delegations and across the wider community that left an indelible mark on our school board. We heard from many two S LGBTQ plus students and community members who had to turn off those board meetings because what was being said was so hurtful. This is not okay. In preparing for this delegation, we reached out to PSN because we recognize that we do not have the same lived experience that many members of the two S LGBTQ plus community have. PSN told us that following last year's failed vote, they ran a support session where past and current HCDSB students shared their experiences of homophobia and transphobia at school, as well as the impact that the failed vote had on them. PSN has given us permission to share these anonymized stories with you tonight. These are lived experiences that happened and continue to happen within your schools. This is real.
Student A is a current high school student at HCDSB. A knew they were transgender in grade three, but always just thought there was something wrong with them, and their family never spoke openly about gender or sexual identity. Homophobia that was taught as a part of the Catholic curriculum caused them to seriously question themselves and their faith. When A was in grade seven, the bullying began. Teachers and staff offered A no support, and the bullying escalated to the point where A was forced to change schools. In an effort to protect themselves, A hides their identity at their new school and has withdrawn from sports and fears daily for their mental and physical safety. A does not feel safe at school. They worry about being outed and being bullied. They won't even use the gender-neutral bathroom at school because they know they will be harassed by other students over it. Homophobic and transphobic slurs are commonly used in school hallways with little to no consequence. The lack of representation anywhere in the school community leaves A feeling very alone and isolated.
Student B. Student B attended HCDSB schools for ten years. In grade nine, a boy sitting behind them in class used a marker to write a slur on B's arm. B tried their best to wash off the mark, but could not get it off completely and spent the remainder of the day trying to hide the slur. This is one of many, many experiences with homophobia and discrimination at school. After grade nine, B transferred to the public school board, and the change was like night and day. At the public school, B felt a sense of belonging and inclusion, surrounded by other students like them who acknowledged and accepted their identity. B says, a safe space can't happen until everyone comes together.
Student C. Student C is a fourteen-year-old, non-binary student at an HCDSB high school who has experienced homophobia, transphobia, and bullying for years. C recounts his first experience with bullying when he was followed home on the bus. Another boy said that C was disgusting and will go to hell. Similar incidents were recurring and were never addressed. It only stopped when the boy graduated. C tried to create a gender-sexual alliance club at school, but was told no because it went against Catholic values. C said to PSN, nothing ever gets done about my problems being a queer person at this school. After coming out as a non-binary, the abuse aimed at C only escalated. C was told in class they would never amount to anything other than a woman. While the regular teacher shut this down, a supply teacher merely stood by and did nothing while students hurled insults at C. C does not feel supported at school. C is told daily that he is invalid, and his mental health has deteriorated. He feels that his school system does not care about him, and that his school does nothing to protect him or queer students. The only non-gendered bathroom in the school is the staff bathroom. C has been told he is not allowed to use it and instead, and instead to use the female bathroom, which C has repeatedly said that he is not comfortable doing. Which C has repeatedly said that he is not comfortable doing.
Students D and E. Students D and E are current H C D S B high school students. Who stated that the decision not to fly the flag was a very hard hit for them and other two S LGBTQ plus students. Both D and E believe that the personal biases of trustees were at the core of the decision. Instead of student best interests or student voice. D said that flying the flag would reassure two S LGBTQ plus students that they are supported and seen by their community. E further highlighted how student voice is consistently ignored by these trustees. How they are dismissed as being too young or too immature. D recounted a time in their youth when they were struggling and questioning their identity. Their mother took them to town hall in June and showed them the pride flag flying high and said. It's a symbol that shows that there's support for you in the community. At school, though, D does not feel supported. For years, D struggled with depression, felt ashamed of who they were, knowing that their peers would make life more difficult. Having witnessed on multiple occasions their peers using homophobic and transphobic slurs. Or making fun of the two S LGBTQ plus community and teachers standing by and doing nothing. E expressed frustration with the fact that H C D S B reduced Pride Month to a single rainbow day. Which didn't even reference pride or the significance of the rainbow colors to the two S LGBTQ plus community. And hopes that students will have a chance to tell these trustees what really, what they really think come the next election.
Stories like these paint a very clear picture of the current state of H C D S B schools. The story shared with us made it clear that some teachers did go above and beyond to make the spaces safe. But these teachers should be the norm, not the exception. By simply maintaining the status quo, stories like these are the reality. A vote tonight against trustee Agnew's motion means that you have no issue with these experiences. That you condone this abhorrent behavior and that you do not care about the protection and safety of the two S LGBTQ plus community. These students exist in your schools. These are their stories and their lived experiences and their daily struggles. Last year, one of the few positives was the addition of the mandatory training. Many of the students shared experiences of staff standing by and allowing the bullying and abuse to occur. And feeling unsupported and unsafe in their school environments. Yes, anti-bullying policies exist, but training and accountability need to be in place for these policies to be effective.
For the moment, let's focus more on training. While training initiatives have begun, they are abhorrently inadequate. Outside of the single panel discussion that took place, there was a distinct and complete lack of any mention of involvement. Of the two S LGBTQ plus community in the development, review or implementation of any training material. Or initiatives undertaken thus far or planned in the future. At the January fourth board meeting, one of your trustees correctly stated that the board can, cannot develop. Training material that pertains to a marginalized group of individuals without having that group represented at the table. Because the committee does not have the lived experience to be able to speak for that group. This is absolutely correct. The voice of marginalized groups, any underrepresented group. Needs to be present during discussions that directly pertain to them. Where is the involvement of the two S LGBTQ plus community anywhere in this initiative? Nowhere in this report doesn't mention any involvement of members of the two S LGBTQ plus community. Whether that involvement comes from the community staff members or outside organizations with a two S LGBTQ plus focus. How can you develop what you consistently and infuriatingly refer to as a shared understanding? Without speaking to any members who represent this community.
At this point, it should be obvious why this training is of critical importance to staff and students who are members of this community. Allow us to remember what one trustee said during last year's delegations. How many students need to feel unsafe before we do something about it? One, if you vote against or abstain from voting on trustee Agnew's motion tonight. Then you are telling these students that they do not belong, that you do not value them, you do not see them, you do not accept them and you do not love them. There is no defense for failing to pass this motion in its entirety. Vote in favor of this motion. Choose love, choose acceptance, choose belonging. Protect your students. Fly the flag.
Thank you. That was perfect timing. Thank you very much for your presentations. Trustees may now ask two questions for clarification purposes. Based on the presentation and, uh, there are three minutes for that. So I'm looking down. The speakers list, we do not have any speakers. Trustees, do you have any questions? Saying, oh, we have a, okay, trustee Yan Tomasi, you have, uh, one second, hold on, Rosie, do we have the count? Trustee Yan Tomasi, you have the floor with three minutes to questions. Go ahead, trustee Yan Tomasi.
So this question goes to staff, um, uh, why staff?
Trustee, trustee, trustee Yan Tomasi, I have to interject. Can you stop that? Uh, the questions are based and I explained the rules very clearly. The trustees are, the questions are for the delegates. On the presentation. So do you have questions for the delegates?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I rephrase, I rephrase my question. So my question is. Have these instances been reported to staff? And have those incidences been reported to the C E C, whether it be the director? And or so that it comes up to trustees, because we're not aware of these stories that you've relayed to us. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm happy to speak to that. I think you, you are very aware of the, the incidences that have been reported. Many students delegated on them last year. Um, I can't speak to every situation, but I know certainly that students have reported instances of bullying. Instances of homophobic slurs, instances of not feeling safe. And all you need to do is go back to last year's board meeting and listen to the students that delegated to hear their voices.
Trustee Yan Tomasi.
No further question, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Yan Tomasi. Uh, we do, we do not have any speakers on the list. So I will thank you very much for your presentation and, uh, response to the delegation. Uh, will be dealt with on the agenda item eight point one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next, uh, delegation, supporting two S LGBTQ plus students at H C D S B. The second delegation is from Alexandra Power and Alison Kolch. Uh, you have ten minutes to, for your presentation. Uh, give me a second. Okay, please start.
Before I start, can we just ensure that we're able to see the slides with the timer? Cause it doesn't seem to be the case.
One second. Why don't you do it the good old fashioned way? Okay, so, uh, you can continue presenting and I'll, I'll use my stopwatch here, okay? At nine minutes.
Thank you.
You'll hear the, you'll hear the chime at nine minutes and then, uh, at ten minutes, you, I'll, I'll appear on the screen. Okay, so you can start now. Thank, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Alexandra Power and I will be delegating along with Alison Kolch this evening. We will be discussing how we, the Hallton Catholic District School Board, should be supporting two S LGBTQ plus students. I am a mother of three, two of whom attend H C D S B. I also have the tremendous pleasure of having worked with young people for the last many years in student health as a family physician.
I'm a mother of two students at H C D S B and a strong ally and advocate for two S LGBTQ plus students and their families.
Our goal this evening is to increase, next slide please. Our goal this evening is to increase your knowledge and understanding of the importance of raising the pride flag in the celebration of pride month. Social psychologists have studied pride flags or studied flags and the meaning behind them. As we have all experienced when looking at our national flag, flags are not simply pieces of material. Conventionally, they are symbols of group solidarity, but from a social psychology lens, they are a physical representation of our identity. And linked to a perceived group. They promote feelings of community and acceptance. The pride flag is the recognized symbol of acceptance and welcoming to the two S LGBTQ plus community. It identifies the institution, building and people who fly it as providing an accepting and safe space. By placing this flag outside our schools and C E C, we make a statement. In twenty twenty-two, at an institution funded not only by Catholic taxpayers, but by a rich and diverse population of Ontario. We emphatically assert that discrimination based on gender identity or sexual orientation will not be tolerated here. Next slide. We need to take a moment to break down the terminology we have heard repeatedly, both around this board table. And in the staff report presented on January the fourth. We continue to hear members of this board use the phrase, a shared understanding. The use of this phrase indicates that there is a common ground of equal relevance in the knowledge and ability to judge the meaning of the pride flag. We would not expect anyone to have a shared understanding of the physics of a nuclear launch. Or a shared understanding of the basic virology of the COVID nineteen pathogen. Instead, when not an area of expertise, we allow those who have studied and lived the experience to provide us with the knowledge they have gained. This is the same for the pride flag. The purpose of trying to establish a new shared understanding of the pride flag is to undermine the beauty and acceptance of this flag. And instead turn it into something disordered and ugly. We will not accept this terminology and expect you to stop using this phrase. Next slide. The more important perspective is the meaning of the pride flag as accepted by the two S LGBTQ plus community. The pride flag has become a well-recognized symbol of support and acceptance for this community. It signifies that no matter who you are, who you love, or how you identify, you are welcome and safe wherever this flag is flown. By flying this universally accepted signal of acceptance at our schools, we exemplify the love and belonging we teach. Next slide.
Why does this all matter? A G A L Canada is the leading organization for two S LGBTQ plus people and issues. Their most recent report entitled Still in Every Class in Every School was released in June of twenty twenty-one. This was a follow-up study to the original that was conducted ten years prior. In total, over four thousand individuals in grade eight to grade twelve across Canada participated in the survey. Approximately thirty-nine percent of these students identified as two S LGBTQ plus. The inclusion of grade eight students underscores the importance of including elementary schools in this motion. Of note, in the ten years since the original study, there was an increase in middle aged school student, middle school aged students feeling unsafe in their schools. Next slide, please. Overall, the results of the report show that sixty-four percent of all participants reported hearing homophobic comments daily or weekly at school. Thirty percent of two S LGBTQ plus respondents had been the victims of cyberbullying compared to just eight percent of their cisgender heterosexual. Respondent peers. Fifty-seven percent of trans respondents had been targets of mean rumors or lies. Next slide, please. Importantly, this report speaks specifically to findings in Catholic schools. It was found that two S LGBTQ plus students attending Catholic schools reported greater incidents of harassment. Especially in relation to sexual and or gender identity and were less likely to disclose those occurrences to school staff. These same students also reported lower levels of school attachment and less two S LGBTQ plus visibility in their schools. Twice as many students who attend Catholic schools reported experiencing harassment based on their perceived sexual orientation. Compared to those attending a non-Catholic school. This was similar to the differences observed with regard to verbal harassment on the basis of gender identity. This is important. In the past, we have heard arguments that our Catholic schools are a place of love and belonging. This report is an objective measure to show that unfortunately, that same sentiment has not been extended to our two S LGBTQ plus students. We need to make special efforts to ensure they feel safe and protected within our walls. Next slide, please. Speaking of support, the students in this report specifically asked for educators to be aware that their silence is harmful. This survey shows that seventy-four percent of the time, teachers and staff do not intervene when homophobic, homophobic or transphobic remarks are made. Next slide, please. The issues presented today are amplified when we consider other marginalized groups. An intersectionality between discrimination faced by two S LGBTQ plus people and indigenous and black populations was also noted. Two S LGBTQ plus indigenous students were twice as likely as their cisgender heterosexual indigenous peers to experience harassment. And two S LGBTQ plus black students were more likely to be verbally harassed about their race. As educators, the primary goal should always be to provide students with a safe learning environment. We are failing at this fundamental task for our two S LGBTQ plus students. Sixty-two percent of respondents did not feel safe at school. And twenty percent of two S LGBTQ plus students reported experiencing sexual harassment at school. This is a real problem and it's one we have the tools to start to remedy. This brings us to an evaluation of the January fourth staff report. The sparsity of this report itself was troubling. The staff committee included many, but notably absent was two S LGBTQ plus representation. There was also no detail as to who serves on the committee, how the committee was selected, examples of the toolkit. Or information as to who will execute the train the trainer model. Of all the training sessions completed, only one panel discussion included a community group with expertise. And notably, while present on the panel, they did not contribute to the training material or content. The messaging was framed as presented from a pastoral perspective. Respectfully, as shown clearly in the A G A L report, Catholic schools are contributing to the damage caused to our two S LGBTQ plus students. When an institution has a gap that requires training, the same people who created that gap should not be charged with developing the training to rectify it.
So what are E G A L's recommendations? There are three pages of recommendation on E G A L's twenty twenty-one report. This should be required reading by all sitting around this table tonight. We will summarize some very actionable suggestions. First and foremost, as a general principle, two S L G P, LGBTQ plus students, families, households and parents and guardians. Should be actively involved in all policies, programs and strategies. This means meaningfully including consulting and engaging individuals and organizations. With established expertise in intersectionality and two S LGBTQ plus inclusive education. Next slide. Next, respondents in the study clearly outlined what they need to see in order to create safe spaces in their schools. Students want for their educators to know that their silence is harmful. They want their educators to stop making assumptions about their gender and or sexual identity and to use their correct pronouns. For two S LGBTQ plus people to be included in classroom examples. And they want for educators to acknowledge the barriers that many of them face. But most importantly, the clear message that came from this report is that students need educators to explicitly and visibly support. Respect, validate and include them. Next slide. So how do we as a board meet these goals? We fly the pride flag. While the presentation of signage within the school was an important step last year, it is not enough. Children, parents, families and community members need to know when they drive past our schools that these are safe places. If these are safe places for their family and friends. They need to have that message of love and acceptance to be explicit and visible. We also need to urgently engage and consult individuals and organizations with established expertise in intersectionality. And two S LGBTQ plus inclusive education to contribute to the development. And facilitation of real and meaningful training sessions for all educators and staff. Next slide. While we are aware of the pain and hurt some delegations and clarifying questions presented last year caused to our two S LGBTQ plus students and staff. While we've hoped this past year has guided us to be stronger, more compassionate individuals. We did feel it was vital to include these resources for anyone watching tonight. And we want you to know that there are many, many allies among us. We see you. We love you. You belong.
Thank you. Good timing. Uh, trustees, do we have any questions for delegates based on their presentation? Seeing trustee, trustee Yan Tomasi, uh, give me a second, hold on. Trustee Yan Tomasi, you have three minutes starting now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So through, to the delegators, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the data that they provided to the board for consideration, can you please provide me with? Where that data was collected? Is it relative to Hallton? And most specifically, Hallton Catholic District School Board? If so, how does it relate?
You did not answer if you don't have the.
So that data was conducted by EGAL Canada. It was conducted out of the University of Winnipeg and Manitoba. It was conducted as a national-wide survey. It was, the references were included on our slides. We actually, in preparation for this meeting, went through all the two hundred pages. And you can do so as well because we did provide the reference in the slide notes. They are very relevant, not only to Halton and Halton schools because this is a, was a well-done scientific study by PhD-qualified individuals to study this matter. And they had a very good respondent base. But I do encourage you to go and read it yourself.
Next question? Trustee Yantamasi.
Oh, sorry. I, I, you cut out there for a minute. So follow-up question. If we're looking at a national average, would you agree with me, again, to each of you, the delegators, that the data would be concentrated in large urban areas? And when I talk about a large urban areas, that that would be specifically, if we're talking about Canada-wide, places like Vancouver, Winnipeg, and, you know, the Greater GTA, Montreal, and so on and so forth? Would you agree with that?
No, I would disagree with that. It just goes against scientific principles when you're doing the study. You know, gay people don't only live in large urban areas. This study, if you had, take the opportunity to look at it, they actually give you the percentages by each province. Ontario was very well represented. And so, no, I, I don't question your questioning of the methodology of this well-done study.
We shall now move on to others. Because do we have any other speakers? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for your presentation to the board. A response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one. Thank you. Moving on to the next delegation. Flying the pride flag at H C D S B schools. The third delegation is from Heather Costerman. Is Heather online?
I am, I'm here.
Okay, give me a second, please. You have ten minutes.
Okay.
One second, hold on. You can start now. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Heather Costerman, and I am a former H C D S B student. I attended Saint Joseph Elementary School and Saint Thomas Aquinas Secondary School. I was also in church with my family every Sunday at Saint James Parish. I was an altar girl for many years. My parents and my sister still reside in Halton and are ratepayers. And I am a member of the L G B T Q two plus community. I was deeply saddened when this matter was voted against last year. I felt that H C D S B failed me, failed my family, my friends, and failed to recognize me as a human being. Being gay is not wrong. It is not disordered, deviant, a choice, or any of the other terrible words that were used in last year's delegations. But that is exactly how the school board made me and my and many others feel. Flying the flag is important. It tells students that they belong, that they are accepted, and that they are not considered disordered or deviant or anything else. Training helps, safe space posters help, but they are not the flag. The flag is the universal symbol of acceptance and belonging for this community. There is no substitute. Choose to be better this year and fly the flag. It is so important for the future of this school system to make changes and do the right thing. To help you make this decision, I feel you need to understand what it was like go, growing up in the Catholic school system as an L G B T Q two plus youth. The bullying started in grade five. I was not very thin, and I was taller than all my classmates. I had buck teeth and glasses. Kids can be very mean. I cried a lot. Every night when I was alone in my room in the dark, I sobbed. It was a very lonely time. When I went to Saint Thomas Aquinas, it only went downhill. Kids are bad, but teenagers are worse. The name-calling was horrible. I wasn't the most feminine girl. I was more comfortable in pants. I was what you might stereotypically refer to as a tomboy. I was labeled by a lot of students as a lesbian. Along with that came many other derogatory terms. I will let you use your imagination here. These labels and insults further tanked my self-esteem and my view of my own self-worth. But I didn't tell anyone, not my parents, my siblings, my teachers, my few friends, no one. I had started having feelings for other girls early on in my teenage years, but I was too afraid of what would happen if I told anyone. I didn't understand the feelings I was having. I told myself these crushes were wrong. I pushed the feelings down. I told myself it was a sin that I would go to hell. I was in a constant battle with my feelings. I had a very hard time dealing with it, and I had no support system. Lessons in school told me these feelings were wrong. I had nowhere to go. It got to the point where I started to question whether my life was worth living. On numerous occasions, I would be crying in my room in the dark, or in the shower, or in the bathroom at school, and I would ask myself, why bother? But it was my faith that would bring back the fact that suicide is wrong, and I would go to hell anyway. I had to hope that things would get better. I toughed it out, but I was miserable. High school was an experience I survived, not an experience in which I thrived. I nearly didn't make it to graduation. Thank God I did. Things did eventually get better. After I graduated and left the Catholic school system behind, in university, I was exposed to more acceptance and tolerance and a safe space where I began to understand the feelings I had had for years. I became more confident and comfortable in my body. Why couldn't my Catholic school system do that for me? I lost my childhood because of it. My story and experience are just one of so many. There are so many children under the Catholic school system that share my experience, and many whose experience was so much worse. Flying the pride flag is the clearest way to send a clear message to your students about what you stand for. There is no question what it means when you see a pride flag flying outside an office or outside a public school or outside a Catholic school in one of the other boards that did make the right choice. The message is clear. These students, these people are accepted and they belong. And choosing not to fly the flags is exactly the opposite. Last year, trustee Agnew's motion called for, oh, sorry. Called for safe space signage in all classrooms. This was reduced to a single sign per school. My problem with this, like many of the other compromises that were suggested, is that it is hidden. It's a compromise. It doesn't send a clear message that these students are accepted and safe in your schools. By hiding these signs and saying no to the flag, you are saying no to me and my community. I wrote you all a letter last year outlining these experiences, which was also shared widely on social media. I also spoke to one trustee on the phone before the vote. This trustee only asked me about the bullying I experienced and only in broad terms, not because of being gay. This trustee didn't acknowledge the rest of my story, including my thoughts of suicide. I cried after that phone call. Only two other trustees responded to my email, acknowledging me and my experiences. Thank you to those two trustees. After H C D S B's failed vote, I watched so many other Catholic school boards across Ontario say yes last year. Toronto was a big player here. I watched the T C D S B meeting last year on this very debate. So much support, so many yeses. I cried when the votes came in favor of this motion. Seeing the flag raised at Toronto Catholic Schools was bittersweet. I cried because I was happy that these students had a clear message of accepting, acceptance and inclusion, that they will have that sense of belonging that I longed for all those years ago. This is such an important step to take. It didn't happen last year, but the support from so many other Catholic boards across the province, I would hope it is taken this year. A student's time in school should be a positive experience, filled with growth and coming into their own. Mine was filled with unhappy memories, and I do not wish that on any student now. Like I said, I didn't thrive in high school. I merely survived. My hope is that this vote is that this change will finally take place. I understand some of the trustees' hesitance. However, it's not you walking through the hallways at the schools. It is the students, trying to figure out who they are and where they're going. Think of them when you are voting on this matter. Think about what is best for them, about shaping their minds, their view of the world, and their place within it. Life turned around for me, yes, but it scares me and makes my heart hurt for the many others growing up within Catholic boards who have said no to the pride flag. The message you sent to our community is that we are wrong, we are not wanted, we are not accepted, and we are not valued. That is not okay. While I was a student, I felt that the world was against me, and I considered ending my life because of it. Please do not do the same injustice to the youth of today. If I felt at all that two S L G B T Q plus students were seen, heard, and accepted when I was in high school twenty years ago, I feel my life would have been very different. I would have, I would not have been so afraid. I would have had to, I would not have had to hide my true self. I could have talked to my teachers about the bullying, about my feelings, and most importantly, I would have felt safe. In conversations about different types of attract, if conversations about different types of attraction and sexual, sexuality were happening in school, I would have felt more comfortable questioning, understanding, and accepting what was happening in my head and in my heart. I wonder if maybe the bullying would not have happened at all because students would have been more accepting of their two S L G B T Q plus peers. It has been so amazing to see so many current parents supporting this cause, and it gives me hope. A real ally would have had the courage to stand up and support the two S L G B T Q plus community and would have flown the flag to prove it. Everyone deserves to feel loved and accepted. Times are changing. The Bible reads, "Love thy neighbor." It does not add the caveat unless they are gay. Fly the flag.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Trustees may now ask two questions of clarification if they would like to. I'm looking down the chat box. I do not see any trustees. Oh, sorry, understood. Trustee De Rosa, you have three minutes, two questions. Your questions will be based on the presentation. Go ahead, trustee De Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, and thank you very much for the, this very compelling presentation. You know, I, I prepared today and wrote and rewrote and rewrote the prepared statement to try to balance the dilemmas that we are facing and frankly, I have no magic answer to this. As a human being, all I can do is offer you my acceptance, offer you my help, which I've done throughout my life and my humanity in everything that I did during, during my lived experience. I am privileged and, and.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, I was, can you stop the timer? I will first listen to the point of order.
It's supposed to be clarifying questions, not statements at this point. And it's not by questions, so I would ask that we stick to.
Mr. Chair, I will gladly forego my turn if I'm not, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Trustee De Rosa, I have a point of order which I have to rule on first.
Go ahead.
So I clearly stated in the opening how we are going to handle this. Trustees have three minutes to ask questions. And you'll ask two questions in the time, and the questions will be based on the presentation. We have passed two minutes and oh, four seconds now, and I've not yet heard the question. So.
Mr. Chair, I have.
Trustee De Rosa, I'm not finished. You do not have the floor. So trustee, trustee Guzzo's point of order is well taken. I will now ask you to get to the question to the delegate. Please start the timer, Rosie.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I refuse to, to, first of all, I'm at two, one fifty-nine. I'm on my own time, and I'm being interrupted. I would appreciate if I could ask a meaningful and truthful question with this young lady, which I feel a lot of empathy for. But if I'm not able to do that, Mr. Chair, I will gladly withdraw. It's unfortunate, but my view is a lived experience with a lot of deep experience on this topic. And frankly speaking, I need to express exactly what I feel and the decision that faces me. But if, if your administration, Mr. Chair, with some other trustees does not allow me to do that, I'm really sorry, but I'm gonna find some other way to address this young lady's issues. And I would like to express my, my heartfelt sentiments for the excellent presentation that you've expressed. But unfortunately, I am not being given an opportunity to talk because I'm expected to react in a particular way. And I, at the age of sixty-seven years old, with a lived experience and many, many experiences, I will not be submitted to a particular point of view that my trustees may not agree with me. Okay? Thank you very much. My apologies, and I welcome you to reach out to me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. I'd like to.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest you do your job.
Trustee De Rosa, you're out of order. Trustee De Rosa, you are out of order. I did read, read the rules very clearly to start with. If the rules were not clear with you, you should clarify those rules. Okay? And I did say trustees have three minutes to ask clarifying questions only. I hope I'm clear.
Mr. Chair, I'm asking you to be fair. That's all.
You are out of order. You are out of order, trustee De Rosa. You do not have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order. Can you state the point of order that affects trustee De Rosa being out of order?
Trustee, trustee Yantamasi, you state the point of order. Please state the, the rule that's broken.
There's no parliament, yes. There's no parliamentary procedure from page one to nineteen. There's nothing that trustee De Rosa has exacerbated. He's followed every procedure. He was given three minutes. He was interrupted. The interruption was subjective, and you ruled on something that was subjective. When we asked questions, you're entitled. I'm, I'm talking, Mr. Chair. You can't interrupt me.
I can.
Asked questions were actually able to substantiate by stating how.
Trustee Yantamasi, you do not have the floor.
Before we come to the actual question. So please rule on what I've just stated. Thank you.
Trustee Yantamasi, I did not hear a point of order. So you, you, you did not state a point of order, so you do not have one. We are now moving down.
Chair, you would have to know the point of order.
You do not have a point of order. Okay. Miss, Miss Costerman, my apologies.
That's okay.
This was meant to be questions to you. I want to thank you for, for the time, and I want to thank you for coming.
Trustee De Rosa, I was on my time, and I had the floor. I have the right to preamble my questions.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, Miss Costerman, and I really appreciate you coming.
I was muted again.
And we shall, we shall move on to the next delegation. I do not see any questions. We shall move on to the next delegation. Item, next item, next delegation, five point five, Pride at H C D S B. The fourth delegation is from Lauren McDonald, Reyna, Reyna Noack, and Father Earl Talbot. Sorry for, for the murdering the names, okay? Sorry. You have ten minutes for your presentation, and I'll tell you when to start. Give me a second. So at nine minutes, you'll hear a chime, and then at ten minutes, you'll see me appear there, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, time starts now. Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening about the importance of equality, diversity, inclusion, and above all, community. To me, all of these things are synonymous with the Catholic faith and the values that were instilled in me by this very school system. This is also what I expect my children to receive from their Catholic education. My name is Lauren McDonald. I grew up in Milton, and I'm very proud to be a graduate of this school system. I attended Our Lady of Victory Elementary School and Bishop Reading Secondary School. I'm grateful to have been raised in this community. Today, my co-presenters and I would like to focus on two topics: the importance of being a good namer and critical thinking. My grade eight teacher's favorite scripture was the Beatitudes from the Sermon on the Mount. In my view, these passages teach us to be humble, loving, merciful, in short, to be a good human being and to be a good neighbor. We are human, therefore we are imperfect, but I believe in the human condition and that we are constantly in pursuit of progress. Sometimes progress is slow, and sometimes it means making mistakes along the way. But if we are true to allowing ourselves to be guided by being loving and merciful to others and acting with humility, we can never go wrong. If we combine this wisdom with critical thinking and objectivity, I hope at the end of this evening, we will agree that the previous decision against flying the pride flag was a mistake and that we now have the opportunity to do the right thing. We can bring this entire community in alignment with what it means to be a loving and merciful Catholic, one who accepts all, and I mean all, of God's people. one who accepts all, and I mean all, of God's people. We say and we believe that God's love is not conditional. Therefore, it would be wrong to put conditions on who belongs and who does not in our community. The refusal to fly the pride flag is a refusal to acknowledge and accept a group who has long been marginalized and even persecuted by our Catholic religion. The pride flag is symbolic because it signifies acceptance and belonging. It says, "We see you, you matter, and you belong." I am fortunate to be accompanied tonight by two incredible allies who will share their personal accounts on why this issue is so important in the context of Catholic education. In my, in my pursuit to secure support for the passing of trustee Agnew's motion tonight in its unamended entirety, I have spoken to many stakeholders in the community. This has included members of parliament, teachers, parents, and administrators. It was my conversation with Adam Van Couverdon, Member of Parliament from Milton, that was the most impactful. He is in full support of flying the pride flag. He has signed the open letter included in the correspondence, and I believe he has spoken to a number of you personally. He shared with me that he had a favorite teacher when he attended St. Ignatius of Loyola, a teacher who had an enormous impact on his life. He encouraged me to reach out to this teacher, Reiner Noack, a former teacher in the Halton Catholic District School Board, will now share his story with you. Reiner? Is Reiner there? Okay, I'm gonna continue reading. If he, Reiner, please feel free to then join when, when you can, and then you can interrupt me. I'm going to continue. Reiner's passage, "Chairperson of the board, board members, delegates, families, it is an honor to have been asked to support this evening's delegation. My name is Reiner Noack, and I worked for the Halton Catholic District School Board from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and six, where I taught both dramatic arts from grade ten to OAC and English from grades nine and ten. I was a passionate, popular, and distinctive educator in my field. I spearheaded the entry of the Halton Catholic District School Board into the Ontario Drama Festival, formerly known as the Sears Drama Festival. I am here to support Lauren McDonald and her team and their efforts to ensure that the Halton Catholic District School Board will raise the pride flag in the future as a demonstration of equality and solidarity for all human beings. The Catholic tradition teaches that human dignity can be protected by a healing community and can be achieved only if human rights are protected and responsibilities are met. Therefore, every person has a fundamental right to life and to those things required for our human dignity. I believe that in order to set students up for success and to become healthy contributing members of society, they need to have models. As educators, we are on the front line of helping children every day, and it is indeed some of those teachers and forward-thinking leaders that have allowed many Catholic schools to become safe spaces and recognize there are many forms of diversity that need respect. Refusal to raise the flag is a blatant signal to further marginalize people demonstrating fear and xenophobia. The Parliament of Canada on July twentieth, two thousand and five enacted the Civil Marriage Act, which legalized same-sex marriage in Canada, the fourth country to do so. Two thousand and five was the year I married my, my husband, thus for the first time acknowledging my sexuality societally. In June two thousand and six, my husband and I, along with many others, including members of the Toronto Police Force, carried the pride flag down Young Street. A portion of this flag is now displayed in the Canadian Museum of History in Ottawa. During my tenure with the school board, I was there for students who were struggling to accept their identity. I was there to witness students driven to suicide through a lack of acceptance. Statistics have shown that those attending a Catholic school have substantial increase in the odds of attempting suicide or suicide risk by age of fifteen and self-harm by the age of nineteen. The Supreme Court does not try to hide the fact that it will shed no tears if Catholic schools vanish from the scene while they continue to receive public funding and continue to enforce outdated rules of the papacy. Sorry. The Charter of Rights and Freedoms guarantees a set of human rights enforced by judicial review of legislation. Many Catholic school boards have begun to reconsider the conflict between Catholic beliefs and human rights. Trying to change attitudes is brave and progressive, and I'm grateful to be able to share my views here today. As teachers, we promote healthy lifestyles and attitudes, and our daily business is prevention intervention. Our experience has taught us that it takes a lesson repeated over and over to challenge, to truly change an attitude. The best way to teach is by example, and therefore, it is the responsibilities, is the responsibility of adults to model the kind of beliefs, behaviors, and attitudes that will make a better world. The world needs to examine its conscience. Now, more than ever, is the time to give hope to disenchanted youth. The media advertises that research funding is being designated for youth to reduce violence and mental health issues. This work is as well as wasted if a definite message is not sent by our school boards. We must be more progressive. Today's children will become tomorrow's patrons, employees, and entrepreneurs. We owe it to them to help them to feel that we each have a fundamental right to freedom. Thank you. The second person I would like to introduce to you is Father Earl Talbot, the former pastor of Holy Rosary Parish in Milton. He is a dear friend, mentor, and person of faith. I celebrated my first reconciliation, first communion, and confirmation with Father Earl. He had a significant impact on my life. When I was in grade eleven, he took me on a missionary trip to Guatemala with seven other parishioners after the destruction of Hurricane Mitch. It is a trip that fundamentally shaped my life for the better. He is a remarkable human being and someone who absolutely personifies the Beatitudes, one who lives and breathes what it means to be loving and merciful. Father Earl is unavailable this evening, but I will read a letter that he has given me to address to the board. Dear sisters and brothers in Christ, at the invitation of Lauren McDonald, who I have known for over thirty years, I offer this brief submission to you, the board of trustees of the Halton Catholic District School Board. I am presently out of the country. I am Father Earl Talbot, a retired priest of the Diocese of Hamilton. I was ordained in nineteen sixty-nine, was blessed to have served nineteen of my first thirty-one years of ministry in the Halton Deanery in Oakville, Burlington, and Milton, six years as dean. I have always found the people of Halton to be welcoming, intelligent, spiritual, and willing to engage in various ministries. Regarding the issue of the pride flag outside of our schools, I see this as a symbol of inclusivity. This priority of inclusivity was one of the hallmarks of the preaching of Jesus about the Kingdom of Light. He broke down the walls and barriers that separated Jews from Gentiles. He encouraged bridges, not walls. In the catechism of the Catholic Church, number two thousand three hundred and fifty-seven, we read that, quote, "Homosexuality has taken a great variety of forms through the centuries and in different cultures. Its psychological genesis remains largely unexplained," end quote. This seems to me to indicate that what we know about homosexuality can be written, in a sense, on a thumbnail. So it would seem inappropriate to judge others in this area. Further, we read in paragraph number two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight, quote, "The number of men and women who have deep-seated homosexual tendencies is not negligible. They do not choose their homosexual condition. For most of them, it is a trial. They must be accepted with respect, compassion, and sensitivity. Every sign of unjust discrimination in their regard should be avoided. These persons are called to fulfill God's will in their lives, and if they are Christians, to unite to the sacrifices of the Lord's cross, the difficulties they may encounter from their condition," end quote. It is a trial, and it is a trial for their family and friends. Misunderstandings and prejudice have caused untold strife and division in families and friendships. In terms of young people, we know that brains are still developing, and I can relate to that, too. Even they are confused about their, their sexual orientation. Often, sorry, they are confused about their sexual orientation. I would suggest that you connect with our Family Life Office at the Chancery and speak with Mrs. Teresa Harnett about this topic. We know that there is an important distinction as well between orientation and practice. More Catholic than the Pope is supposed to be a joke, but some want to be. We recall Pope Francis's words years ago when he was asked about sexual orientation, and his response was, "Who am I to judge?" It seems to me important to avoid either-or thinking and opt for both-and. We are not defined by persons by our sexual orientation. We are persons first and foremost. The word Catholic, small c, means universal. That is, all are included and welcome. If our Catholic school boards and our dioceses have given the green light to the flag, have they been consulted about their reasons for doing so? I hope so. Many people may be surprised to know what percentage of our Catholic high school students are baptized Catholic. There are many, there are, there are very many of other face and no face. I believe we need to spend more time, energy, and money on issues such as residential schools and our indigenous people, truth and reconciliation, also to unite in the battle against pornography, which cuts across every aspect of sexual orientation and demeans us all. Once again, I would recommend our Family Life Office for a wealth of information. Thank you for listening. Peace and well-being. Father Earl Talbot. Thank you for listening. Please vote to fly the flag this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. McDonald, we are missing two other speakers that you'd like to hear. But thank you for your presentation. I'm gonna ask trustees, I see two trustees have their hand up. I would once again like to read rate. Policy I dash oh six is very clear about, about the timing trustees get to ask questions. You have three minutes to ask your questions, and I'd like to hear questions right away. So we have two trustees online, trustee De Rosa and trustee Antumasi. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor. One second, hold on. One second. Okay, go ahead. You have the floor. Three minutes, two questions.
Mr. Chair, I think I will cede my position.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Trustee Antumasi, your time starts now.
Well, thank you for your generosity, Mr. Chair. So my question to Ms. McDonald, I understand that you've been in concert with our member, one of our members of parliament. Can you tell me, does the federal government currently have a policy that stipulates flying the flag during the month of June?
Yeah, I would like to read the open letter to you from the Liberal Members of Parliament, an open letter to this board. On January eighteenth, you will have an opportunity
You, you can only answer the question that I've asked. Mr. Chair, can you please rule on that?
Pause the time, please.
I'm responding.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So the question was whether the federal government has a policy on that. I don't think that's part of this presentation. So so I will not, that's not a valid question. Trustee Antumasi, your next question.
So, Miss, can I restate my question based on the presentation? Miss McDonald stated in her presentation that she was speaking to and has looked at the legislation as it pertains to the two SLGTP and has stated that the federal government has taken a position. So my question is very specific as your interpretation of our bylaws, and that is, has the federal government issued a order of parliament that deals with flying the flag during the month of June? Yes or no?
Once again, once again, Ms. McDonald, I have not seen that in your presentation. I don't believe it's part of your presentation. So trustee Antumasi, you're gonna ask questions on the presentation itself. Go ahead with your next question.
Mr. Chair, that is part of her presentation. She stated that the federal government and the Member of Parliament that she spoke to and the letters that he wrote to us, just for your information, Ms. McDonald, I've also written to the Member of Parliament taking him to task on his role vis-à-vis a provincial matter because he is a federal jurisdiction. So my question remains, does the federal government of your knowledge have a month through an order of parliament dedicated, dedicated to the LGTBTQ? Thank you.
Trustee Antumasi, I'll read the line from the presentation. It says very clearly here, but it is my conversation with Adam Van Couverdon, Member of Parliament from Milton, that was the most impactful. He is in full support of flying the pride, pride flag. He has signed the open letter included in the correspondence, and I believe he has spoken to a number of you personally. I'm not sure this is referring to any policy or procedure of the federal government.
I think you need to go further into her presentation because the presentation also speaks to the Canadian flag having put into a museum. I think my question is both
No, that's incorrect. That's incorrect.
Okay.
That's incorrect.
Okay, let's, let's, let me ask the question directly to Ms. Lauren. Ms. Lauren, what was your intent in your presentation? Were you talking about the federal government policies or were you talking about MPP Adam Van Couverdon?
So I made no reference to the Canadian flag in my presentation. It was, it was cited from Reiner's correspondence in connection to marching in a pride flag that is now in the museum in Ottawa. I made no reference to any legislation federally, but I'm happy to read to you the open letter that was written
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
MP in Halton.
That's fine, thank you.
And their position on the flag, which is in support.
Thank you. Trustee Antumasi, you have your second question.
The LGTBTQ flag.
Trustee Antumasi, you have your second question. Go ahead with your second question, please.
I only have one question, Mr. Chair. I want to know from Ms. McDonald whether the federal government has recognized the month of June as being able to fly the LGTBTQ flag. That's my only question.
I'm happy to respond to that.
Okay, I'll allow that question, but go ahead. Yeah.
I'm going to read to you an excerpt from the open letter from every single Liberal MP in Halton. "In two thousand and six, the pride flag was flown for the first time on Parliament Hill. Some of us were there that day to celebrate this important milestone for Canada and the two SLGPTQ plus community. The simple act of raising the rainbow flag made an enormous difference in the lives of the advocates who fought for this ceremony to take place. It told them that their country supports them, that their country loves them, that their country needs their voices at the highest levels of political leadership. You can send the same message to your students, their parents, and your staff that the Halton Catholic District School Board supports them, loves them, and that they are called to shape the future of their community. To quote your colleague, trustee Agnew, "You have a chance to be leaders, champions, if you will, of the future of the amazing things to come. On January eighteenth, you have a chance to stand up for change. As the federally elected representatives for Halton, we express our unwavering support in favor of flying the flag."
Thank you. Time is up, and, and we don't have any other speakers on the list, so I will thank you for your presentation. Thank you for coming. Thank you for answering the questions, and a response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one. Thank you. We shall now move on to the next delegation, flying the flag with pride. The fifth delegation is from Nick Hotchkiss. Nick, you have ten minutes for your presentation, but give
You're muted currently. Okay, I guess I'll start then, if that's all right. Hello and good evening, members of the board. My name is Nick Hotchkiss. I use they/them pronouns for your reference. And I'm here to present my delegation, Flying the Flag with Pride, Part Two, the sequel to my previous delegation last spring, as many of you may remember. Since I was last here, a lot has happened across Halton and Ontario in terms of, go back to the starting slide. The beginning of the presentation. That starting slide, just put the title on it. Yeah, thank you. "Since I was last here, a lot has happened across Halton and Ontario in regards to flying pride flags at Catholic boards. Multiple other Ontarian Catholic boards followed suit in presenting motions similar to mine, varying decisions being reached. Now, I only find it fair to show both the negative and positive reactions resulting from the decisions of several of those boards last year. So here are some of the protests that occurred." Next slide, please. Yeah. To start this off, this is the largest negative reaction in form of protest that I was able to find in response to a board approving flying the flag. In Durham, there were roughly a dozen protesters from the Parents' First Educators Group, otherwise known as PAFE, if you go by the acronym. They were driving around in their cars with signs protesting the board's decision to fly the flag in June. There was one counter protester seen here in this photo who was there to push back against their drive-by protest. I did as much research as I could, and this really was the worst result that I was able to find in terms of ratio and numbers. I didn't find any negative news or protests following this specific Durham protest either. Next slide. Another protest that happened was in response to Thunder Bay's decision to approve flying the flag. PAFE members showed up, again, around a dozen people, and did another drive-by protest with some standing outside of their cars as well. In response to PAFE's turnout, there were roughly fifty counter protesters with pride flags, pride masks, and more to demonstrate their support of Thunder Bay Catholic School Board's decision to fly the flag. In this case, the community in support of the board's decision drowned out the backlash, as you can see, from the far higher ratio of counter protesters. Now, I would like to remind you all that these were protesters who had approved the decision to fly the flag. There was very little overall backlash from the community with the exclusion, of course, of these minor protests. With that being said, I With that being said, I would like to show my last protest example, this time from a board who declined to fly the flag." Next slide, please. "The Halton Catholic District School Board. We had roughly 200 people show up, myself included, to protest outside your office to show that we, the Halton Catholic community, do not stand with you and your previous decision to not fly the pride flag during the month of June. Yes, P A F E members did show up and drove by, as they did with every other school board protest I mentioned, but our numbers were far greater at the end of the day. Looking back on these protests, you can see that the largest group against flying the flag had a turnout of roughly a dozen people, while the largest turnout in support of flying the flag was our roughly two. Not one board felt publicly clear significant enough to make them reverse or modify their decision to fly the pride flag. Boards who opted not to support flying the flag, such as Halton, can expect supporters to continue to protest and demand change like we are doing here today. In addition to the conclusions we can draw from these protests, I have some quotes on the impact of flying the flag that I would like to share with you all." Next slide, please. "At my first meeting with you all last year on April 6th, trustee De Rosa asked me this very fair question following my delegation. Flying the flag for one month, how far does that go for improving your flight? This is how far." Next slide, please. "In an article posted last year, the Chair of the Niagara Catholic District School Board said something very similar to what I told you all last year. It is not enough to simply tell queer students and staff that they are loved and supported. Flying the pride flag is the most universally accepted visible show of support for all who identify as 2 S L G B T Q plus. Words and actions are very different. Saying you support students and visibly showing how you support students are very different. This flag would be a physical, tangible promise to students that they are welcome and that you as a board promise to do better in your efforts to support queer students. And lastly, I reached out to Norm Di Pasquale, a trustee at the Toronto Catholic District School Board, who told me the same sort of reaction that their board had received. He told me the same thing I had read in many articles from other officials who work for boards that approved flying the flag, that there was an overwhelmingly positive response and that students finally feel seen. But he also told me something neither he nor I was expecting." Next slide, please. "What I didn't anticipate was the overwhelming response from alumni who suffered in our system. For them, they were finally able to let go of the pain they suffered from homophobia. They were so grateful. People all the way up to age 70 plus were reaching and thanking us. Flying the flag would not only impact the current students and staff of the Halton Catholic District School Board. Your decision also has the power to impact those who suffered in queer phobic school systems for too many years, myself included, and offer them at least a start to their healing. You have the power to do this, to start making things right for those currently learning in your halls and to start healing the spirits of those who left H C D S B walls years ago. You can justify last year's decision based on a lack of information. As the first board to face this type of motion last year, you did not know how you would implement it or what the community reaction would be like. But now you do know. You have that information. We have seen the protests, we have heard quotes from officials and community members, and we know that flying the flag is the right decision. So if you say no today, you will be acknowledging that yes, this is an easy step towards progress. And yes, this has the power to change the lives of queer people inside and outside of your schools. But no, you, the trustees of the Halton Catholic District School Board, are unwilling to take one simple step to show support for the L G B T Q plus community. We are giving you a second chance to make the right decision. Right your wrongs, make the change, fly the flag. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Hotchkiss. Let me just turn my timer off. It will go there. Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to ask trustees if they have questions. Do we have any trustees who have questions? Seeing none, I will thank you for taking the time to come and speak to us at the board. Really appreciate it. And the response to your delegation will be dealt with on the agenda item 8.1. Thank you. I see our next two presenters are lined up, so we move on to the next item.
Chair, I think you've-
Oh, so, oh, sorry, trustee De Rosa.
Inadvertently. I may not be the voice of convenience, but-
That's okay. Do you have a question?
I have a question, yes.
Okay, so I'll give you three minutes with the previous delegate, Ms. Hotchkiss. Are you good, Ms. Hotchkiss?
Yeah.
Are you available there? Okay. So trustee De Rosa, you have three minutes to ask two questions. And please ask your questions right away. Okay? Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will ask my question right away. Ms. Hotchkiss, are you asking me to give you, to give you the benefit of the doubt? Because I really have a problem, I have a problem with the effectiveness of this flying the flag. And essentially, in essence, this is what's, what the bottom line is. And I, I, I am empathetic to your appeals and everyone's else's appeals tonight, regardless of what anybody might think. But I really, deep inside, feel that this symbolic gesture is motivated by everything else other than making a real difference to the kids that really have this problem. And I've maintained, and thank you for, for referring, referring to me in your presentation tonight. I have genuinely, and still have the same concerns, seven months after we deliberated this, is that I really don't believe that the gesture of raising a flag will solve this long-term problem. And I am sympathetic to your plight.
Trustee De Rosa, please.
So I'm asking you the question, Mrs.-
Point of order!
I am asking the question.
Please pause, pause.
Are you asking me to give you the benefit of the doubt?
Pause, pause, trustee De Rosa. There's a point of order here. I need to rule on that point of order.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Please be quiet. Vice Chair Agnew, what's your point of order?
My point of order is I have yet to hear a clarifying question of the presenter based on her presentation. So trustee De Rosa, could please get to the question? That'd be much appreciated because I haven't heard a question yet.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, the question was stated in the beginning.
Trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, you will wait. Trustee De Rosa, you will wait.
Chair, I have a point of order.
You will stop, trustee De Rosa. Trustee Antomasi will stop. I'm ruling on a point of order.
I know, but my point of order-
Trustee Antomasi, you will stop with your point of order. I'll finish one point of order, then I'll come to you. Got it? So, Vice Chair Agnew, you have stated the point of order correctly as per, as per our policy I dash O six. Trustees have to come up with their questions. I've not heard a question till now. Trustee De Rosa, please go ahead with your question.
I will ask the question like I asked, right at the start of my dissertation.
Yeah, now you have to stop because-
Are you asking me to give you the benefit of the doubt?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Trustee Antomasi has a point of order, so I got to go to that point of order and then come back to you. Okay? So trustee Antomasi, state your point of order, please.
My point of order is stems from Ms. Agnew's point of order. She never stated what aspect, which bylaw, which policy, nor did you in your ruling of accepting it.
We are not in policy.
Trustee, I do not want trustees talking over each other. So trustee Antomasi, I did not hear your, hear the rule, the procedure or policy that had broken from you. So I don't hear the point of order. Can you clearly state your point of order?
I've asked, my point of order is very specific. Can trustee Guzzo, or excuse me, trustee Agnew, please state which bylaw, which policy applies to her point of order?
So trustee Antomasi, I hope you are very clear about the meaning of a point of order and how it's to be applied. Okay? Point of order is applied when some procedure is broken, a policy is broken. You're pointing me to another trustee, which is not correct. Your point of order is not well received and is not in order. So we shall now move on to-
Mr. Chair.
We are moving on to trustee De Rosa. You are not forgetting me, trustee De Rosa.
I have a minute and 53, I have a minute and 53 seconds on my time.
Acknowledged. I'm coming back to you. I'm coming back to trustee-
Coming back to me, Mr. Chair.
Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor now. You are continuing the time.
Thank you very much. You're very gracious.
Mr. Chair, point of privilege?
Okay, trustee De Rosa, sorry you had to wait. I have a point of privilege to deal with.
Well, what can we say?
I-
When you're ready to make the call.
Be quiet. I have a point of privilege here which I have to deal with.
I believe we're misidentifying our delicate. I would appreciate if we're using the respectful pronouns that they have asked us to use, please and thank you.
Who's, who's speaking?
Alicia, trustee Tokio.
Tokio, okay. So your point of order is, is somebody has misused the pronouns?
Yeah, I believe it's disrespectful.
And who, who is disrespectful? Sorry, I might have done by mistake.
Pardon?
Who did that? And who, your point of order is to whom? Me or some other trustee?
Just to all the trustees, please.
Okay, I might have made a mistake and I apologize for that. Okay? Your point of order is well received and we shall continue with trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you will continue with your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have another question now, and I will apologize for him. I, I am, I am struggling with these new terminologies and I want to afford the respect to anyone to, to tell me how they would like to be addressed. So how would you like to be addressed, number one? And I'm happy to, I'm sorry?
As I stated in the beginning of my presentation, I use they/them pronouns. I identify as non-binary.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
I am, I am happy to refer to you to, as you wish. That is not my issue.
Would you like to-
My question to you right off the start.
Yep.
Is very, very simple. Okay? Because we have a difference of opinion on this. But in the end, my question's very simple. Do you want me to give, are you asking me to give you the benefit of the doubt on this issue?
Yeah. So I wouldn't necessarily phrase it as giving the benefit of the doubt. You said you didn't know how flying the flag would improve the plight of 2 S L G B T Q plus individuals, which is a fair question. But last year, there were several delegations, mine included, and this year, again, several delegations, mine included, where students and alumni and those who are not even in the community are telling you how they have seen this flag impact those who are part of the community. I have told you myself last year, and I will say it again this year, that seeing the flag, I've seen it at public schools and I've cried. I've seen it at public schools and I've cried because I know that they are not afraid to visibly show that they support students. All of Halton's support for students so far has been internal inside the walls of the schools. Going past our school, you wouldn't know that we are a supportive community. And it feels like you're almost hiding that support. It feels like you're ashamed of saying that you support students because it is a visible symbol. And all the boards who have passed this motion to fly the flag have heard outrageous, like, comments and reactions from those who are in the community saying, thank you for flying this flag. We feel very supported. I can refer to the email that both of, that Mr. Di Pasquale sent me. I can refer you to the articles written on the protests that were included in my presentation. You can look at the other delegations performed here tonight and at last year's board meetings. But students, alumni, and members who are part of the community, who aren't even part of the Halton Catholic community, have stated time and time again that this flag means something to the community because it is a sign of visible support that identifies that promise to do better, which isn't just words and empty meanings. It is a physical, tangible promise that shows that there is really something trying to be done at the school board.
Thank you. Thank you for your question, trustee De Rosa. Your time is up. We are now moving on to the next-
That was one question.
We are, sorry?
That was another question. I have another question.
Rules apply to all, trustee De Rosa. Rules apply to all. You have three minutes to answer two, two questions and you did. Use your time and be fair with everybody. We have delegates who are lined up and I can see them on the screen. Moving on. Thank you, Nick, and really appreciate it, okay? Moving on, the next delegation is Strengthening Community Relationships from Halton Acta. The sixth delegation is Halton Acta. As I said, you have 10 minutes to present and give me a second while I start my old-fashioned time watch. Ready? Yes, you can start now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and trustees, for allowing us the opportunity to delegate. My name is Tara Hambley, and I am the President of the Elementary Teachers in the H C D S B.
I am Lorraine Beraldo Turner, President of the Secondary Teachers in the Halton Catholic District School Board.
We are here today on behalf of almost 3,000 Halton Catholic teachers to voice our overwhelming support for the motion to fly the pride flag in June. As Catholic teachers, we strive to create classrooms and schools that are inclusive and welcoming to all. And as members of the broader Catholic education community, it is incumbent upon us all to show through our actions that everyone is deserving of God's love. Flying the pride flag is a meaningful step that we can show to take, to show members of the L G B T Q 2 S I plus community that we stand with them as allies in support of human rights and our Catholic values of inclusivity. Too often, staff and students in the L G B T Q 2 S I plus community feel they must hide who they are for fear of discrimination and reprisals based on their sexual orientation or gender identity. This can have significant physical and mental health consequences for those individuals. Rather than seeing difference and separation, we are called as Catholics to embrace all that unites us, to strive for more peace, respect, and compassion in our society.
We owe it to our students and colleagues to stand with them as allies. How can we preach the importance of safe spaces if community members do not feel safe enough to be who they are? How can we encourage students to become discerning believers if they do not see themselves represented by the adults entrusted with their care? We can and must do better. Flying the pride flag will not eradicate social injustice, but it is one step toward confronting hate and showing the H C D S B community that we are working toward creating a culture in our schools and our society that allows individuals and families to live healthy lives free of harassment and prejudice. Last year, when this motion was first, first put forth, there were some letters and delegations in opposition to flying the pride flag. The reasons offered by these individuals only reinforce the need to fly the pride flag in June. There are still many individuals in our community who seek to ostracize rather than accept, divide rather than unite. Now, more than ever, we must come together as one Catholic community.
The pride flag represents the diversity of the L G B T Q 2 S I plus community. Each colored stripe has a meaning, all which align with our Catholic values.
Red is for life. We believe all lives are sacred and should be treated as such.
Orange is for healing. There is still much healing to do in our H C D S B community. Flying the pride flag is just one way to begin that process. Jesus himself was a healer.
Yellow is for sunlight. The sun is warm and welcoming, exactly what we want our school communities to be.
Green is for nature. We want our school communities to flourish and grow.
Blue is for serenity. It helps calm the soul and signifies a safe space.
And purple is for spirit. Just like how our schools show their spirit, the pride flag is one way to demonstrate school spirit for all members of the community.
The pride flag was created to express joy, beauty, and power. The rainbow remains a powerful, recognizable symbol of that expression. It is a beautiful sign of joy and acceptance, one we should embrace and celebrate.
In June, we will be flying our own rainbow-colored flags in our offices to demonstrate that we support all of our members, students, and community. We ask that you adopt this motion to raise the pride flag and your voices to stand with us in the name of love and acceptance.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentations, presentation. I will now open up the floor for trustees if they would like to ask two questions. And I'm going to give it a minute. Trustees, do we have questions for presenters? Seeing none, I would like to thank you both for your time and your patience. And thank you for coming and presenting, presenting to us. Response to the delegation will be dealt with on the agenda item 8.1. Thank you again.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Moving forward, we now move on to item 5.8, lift high the cross, raise not the pride flag. The seventh delegation is from Veronica Tuie. Is Veronica online?
I am. I'm just not as tech savvy.
Okay, I'll give you a time. Tell me when you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Ready? Okay. You have 10 minutes. Your time starts now. At nine minutes, you'll hear a chime and I will appear on screen. Go ahead.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. My name is Veronica Tuie, and I, I address this board as a parent who sends my children to Catholic schools with the good faith and understanding that they will be taught the magisterial teachings- that they will be taught the magisterial teachings of the Roman Catholic Church. I know that flying the pride flag over Catholic schools and administrative buildings violates these teachings. It would deeply sadden me to see that flag raised by schools of the H C D S B. Some people believe that the raising of the pride flag is necessary to stop bullying and discrimination. And while these are always good intentions in themselves, the act of raising the flag over Catholic schools will undermine the mission of Ca- of Catholic education and the mission of the Halton Catholic District School Board. The mission statement of the Halton Catholic District School Board states that the board is dedicated to providing excellence in Catholic education by developing Christ-centered individuals enabled to transform society. Flying the pride flag will not help the board to achieve these crucial objectives. It will, in fact, betray this mission. Many who advocate for the raising of the flag assert that it will make the schools it flies over more welcoming, inclusive, and supportive of people. That only proves that our hearts and our wishful thinking can deceive us. The pride flag is a lie. The flag isn't about inclusion, diversity, and acceptance, but about conformity, exclusion, and intolerance. The pride flag is, in fact, a giant red flag of warning for anyone concerned about traditional values and the freedom to live by our values. The pride flag is a symbol of mortal sin. It's not coincidence that pride is both the name of the flag and the name of one of the seven deadly sins. In fact, pride was the orig- was the cause of the original sin committed by Adam and Eve, and it is considered the source of all other deadly sins. The Ca- the Catholic Church can never support or approve mortal sin, and the pride flag is a symbol of a mortal sin. There are those who will say that secular institutions fly that flag, and so our Catholic schools should follow along and do the same. But it has never been the mandate of the Catholic Church to follow the fashions of the world. Quite the opposite is true. The Catholic Church is charged to lead the world to Christ. We should be leading the world by doing what the H C D S B mission statement claims it is here to do, by developing Christ-centered individuals enabled to transform society, to transform society away from sinful ways and toward Jesus Christ. Secular institutions that fly the pride flag have no mandate to defend the teachings of the Catholic or of any other faith, but this board does. The faith we express is that God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, Jesus Christ, not to condemn the world but to save it. We know that God is love and that he demonstrated his love by dying on the cross. The pride flag is a mere worldly symbol. The cross represents the very heart of the church and its values, which transcend all symbols. We do not need any flag for we have the cross. The cross demonstrates and reminds us of the love God has for all people, no matter who they are. It tells us that God desires to gather us all to himself as one family in Christ. Our cross is our sign of true love and of mercy, of eternal life. It is a bold declaration of hope in a world full of sorrows. It is the hope we must nurture, a hope in the Lord as our strength. Symbols such as the pride flag will come and go, but as Saint Paul tells us, Jesus Christ is the same yesterday, today, and forever. We teach our children the marks of the church, which we recite each time we say the creed. The marks of the church remind us that one holy Catholic and apostolic church must speak with a single voice and reject all that is not in keeping with it, that pride flag is not in keeping with our faith. Our children are watching us. What will we teach them? I thank you for allowing me to address this board.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. E. Uh, I will now uh open up the floor to trustees who have questions. Uh, so trustees have three minutes and two questions. Uh, first on the speaker list is uh trustee Boye. Trustee Boye, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I'd just like to uh thank Ms. Tuie for her de- delegation. I know that something that we share is a deep belief in our faith and in the Catholic Church and the power that it has. My question for you is, um, I know we share a difference of opinion, but uh in my mind, in the board's mandate to create uh Christ-centered individuals who have the power to transform society, in my mind, students who identify as L G B T Q plus are included in that. I, my simple question for you is, do you agree that we should include L G B T Q plus students in our mandate to create the le- the Christ-centered leaders of tomorrow and the Catholic leaders of tomorrow?
Absolutely, everyone. The Christ taught us that that every single individual is uh deserves their dignity and is loved by God, for he created them. He 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 tells us, I created you before you were born. I created you in the womb. So we are all accepted. However, truth isn't subjective. There is, there is absolute truth, and that is what we want to stand by, the thousands of years of teachings of the Catholic Church. I did, I did make some notes on how to support our our students in the sense that um I want to focus on on your question towards Christ-centeredness. So the two L G B T Q plus flag is a very self-centered practice. It is not a Christ-centered practice. Truth is not subjective. It's absolute truth. It's real whether we accept it or not. And I just want to quote the Belgian philosopher, professor, and author, Dr. Alice von Hildebrandt. She stated, if you want to destroy society, you should aim to destroy the family and to pervert education, which no longer educate children. We give them information perverted by realism and subjectivism. We can support Christ-centered individuals by building on their relationship with Christ through prayer, through the sacraments, through actually getting to know Christ and having an encounter with him so that they can discover who he created them to be. He created them to be who they are and embrace who they are, but that doesn't, we are so much more than our sexuality, and we can only discover who we are if we have a deep encounter with Christ. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, trustee Boye. You still have twenty seconds.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Tuie. You answered my question. Um, my follow-up question for you is um is how do you think that we can incorporate students into our Catholic community and get them involved and engaged in their Catholic education if they don't feel welcomed and supported by our schools?
Uh, we have uh, we have, the time has run out, but I'll give you a quick answer. If you can give a quick answer, Mr. E.
Uh, absolutely. We need to do um, we need to do what causes the most change. And what did Martin Luther King do when he wanted to fight against discrimination? He turned to the Bible and he spoke the truth. As one of my other delegates said, she uh, he referred to the Beatitudes, Matthew five forty-three, forty-five. Love your enemies and pray for those that first persecute you. We need to address the bullying and teach our, all of our youth, uh, all the values. We need to teach love, kindness, folk, faith, hope, and above all, charity. And in saying that, I just want to add that that from from the last delegate, I know that someone who spoke in support of of our cause against the flag, they received a lot of backlash and they were subject to hate crimes for their opinions, for following uh, for speaking up on their beliefs. And and that brought for me a sense of fear and apprehension to speak tonight. And I, and I think it's no coincidence that there's only two of us speaking um, to support our family values because we are afraid of the backlash that might come, the social ostracism that we might receive for staying true to our, to our Christian traditional values that, you know, I'm afraid, what am I going to see when I turn on Facebook and I go into the, you know, the school forums that are people gonna attack me for staying true to my faith and beliefs? That's, that's a concern. So we need to, we need to address the bullying by going back to the values.
Okay, next up is uh trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, uh, you have three minutes, you have two questions. Go ahead, trustee O'Brien.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and um, thank you, Ms. Tuie, for a most courageous presentation and delegation. Uh, question, you said this flag is about conformity, exclusion, and intolerance rather than inclusion, diversity, and acceptance. Can you explain more about why you think this?
I think, I believe that um conformity, because I'm sure that there's many people who don't fully understand the true intention of God's creation about sexuality, about um about how he intended um the human person um and and marriage. And so they conform to what society is telling us is is the norm. Exclusion and intolerance because because of the exclusion that we have felt as um and many respected Catholic authors have have spoken to this as well and speakers um, and just to provide evidence of the events of last year. So that one, one delegate spoke against the flag when it was debated last summer and a complaint was lodged against their professional body using statements that they had made from their delegation. You can't get more intolerant than that. Another delegate had members of their Catholic community call out, call them out on social me- call out on social media the police to investigate them for hate crimes based on their delegation.
Thank you. I I I think that's a great answer.
Okay. Moving on down the speaker's list, uh, we have trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, three minutes, two questions. Please go go for your questions right away. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think I, I believe I see uh Mr. Yantamasi in the lineup ahead of me.
Uh, I think trustee Yantamasi has put a comment there. Uh, and I'll, I'd like to recommend to trustees once again and not to put their comments out there. Put your hand up and speak when you're given the floor. So trustee De Rosa, you have the floor, three minutes and two questions. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, this is a very, very heart-wrenching uh debate, no question, and uh I'm I'm having the, can you discern for me? How do we discern the political side of this and the outing of people who disagree with with the narrative versus an objective debate over what we are dealing dealing with? Because there's ugliness on both sides. And um, this is what's the ugliness on both sides is difficult to discern sometimes. I don't feel like I'm being discriminatory or insensitive to these, to the plight of these individuals. And I, my, my human nature says, go protect them as much as possible within my capabilities. I wrestle with the fact that a symbol isn't not, is not going to resolve the problem. And in fact, it's going to make a political statement for many people who have other intentions. So can you help me navigate that? What is, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, obviously, only, only you can, you can decide and and my, my true um my, my only recommendation is that you sit before the Blessed Sacrament and you take it to prayer, that God opens your heart and and to to the truth, because that's all we can ask of God is to bring us to his truth. And um, you know, I, I am with you in the sense that my heart goes out to every individual that has been hurt and bullied and has has suffered. Um, but there's been discrimination of so many kinds for so many years. Not that I'm undermining anything that they've suffered for, by all means. But um, one of my, my delegates, she quoted the Catholic um, the catechism book, and unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me. But it mentions something how how what we identify with and what we practice are two different things. And um, that is what we're trying to separate here. You know, we love the individuals. God says, love this, love the sinner, but not the sin. And that's what we're stating when, when our Lord approached Mary Magdalene. He gave her her dignity. He gave her her love. He, he, he erased sin from her and he brought her to restored her to who God created her to be. But his, his last words in that passage were, go and sin no more.
Thank you. Three minutes is up, but thank you, uh, trustee De Rosa. Uh, we have trustee Yantamasi in the queue. Trustee Yantamasi, you have three minutes for your three questions, starting now.
Yeah, thank you for the guidelines, Mr. Chair. Um, so um, Ms. Tuie, um, thank you for your presentation. Very well thought out. I understand the points you're making. My question to you is as follows. Why do you send your children to Catholic education vis a vis the public board?
That's a tough question. I I truly, I truly wanted to to look for alternatives and and my heart um wishes that we could afford more for our children, just as any parent. They want, they want to give their children what's best. Um, and if I could afford, you know, private schooling for uh, for all my three children, um, I wish that would be an option for us. My husband, however, he he's not a practicing Catholic and he doesn't see um we don't see eye to eye on everything. But we agree to to love our children and to teach them values um, that are in alignment with the Catholic faith, because he is, he is a Catholic. He's just not practicing. Um, so we chose our compromise was a public Catholic school because they do teach and and as I stated in my presentation, I I pray that they they teach the the magistrate the of the Roman Catholic Church, that they teach what's essential and that they provide our children with the sacraments and the opportunity to know Christ.
Follow up, Mr. Chair.
Pause, can you pause? Uh, trustee Yantamasi, these questions are to be based on the presentation. Okay, I have allowed the first question. It's not based on the presentation. So your follow-up que- question that you have.
Can you, can you provide the guidelines of why my question was not based on?
Can you specify, can you specify? Trustee Yantamasi, can you specify which section of the presentation you are referring to? And the question that will be on that.
Chair, um, you need to specify, you made a ruling, so I would ask you to specify for me where does my question not fit the presentation of Ms. Tuie?
Trustee Yantamasi, I'm not going to get into an argument or discussion. I did read the presentation. And I did pay, trustee Yantamasi, you do not have the flow. You do not have the flow. I have listened very carefully to the presentation and your question really did not fit into the presentation. Yet I allowed you. So my suggestion to you is your next question. The next, trustee Yantamasi, you do not have the flow. You do not have the flow. So my suggestion to you is your next question, please base it on the presentation. Your time starts now. Trustee Yantamasi.
Ms. Tuie, you spoke to faith formation as being one of the main reasons or an overarching reason as to why you would choose Catholic education. Can you tell me, based on your presentation, how Catholic education fulfills that for your children, given that you're in a marriage that has one parent that is Catholic and another parent that is not?
I work coincide with my children's education and um the Catholic education system provides them with the sacraments, provides them with religion class. I do have to um I do have to supplement their um, their faith formation so that it is in alignment with with what I feel is truths, and so much has changed. I've always taken an active role in their faith formation. I've um, for years, I've done the catechism at Holy Rosary. I was on the Rosary Apostolate. Um, and and so I believe that I work in unison with the Catholic uh, education system in Halton to ensure that my children build a to ensure that my children build a re- a strong relationship with Christ. Because ultimately, the only way we can truly know who we are is to have a strong encounter with Christ. And I I don't believe that every person leaving the Catholic School Board system actually leaves with that when they graduate. So we as parents have to, we have to assist them and we have to work with the school.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tui. Uh, I do not, I do not see any more speakers in the list. Thank you so much for taking the time to come and speak to uh speak to other trustees and really appreciate that. So a response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one. Thank you. We shall now move on to the next delegation. Uh, item five point nine, shine the light of Christ, a Catholic solution to our Catholic School Board. Uh, this delegation uh is the final delegation for the evening and it's from Mark Hushelt. Uh, Mark, are you there? Ready to start?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Yeah, give me a second. Give me a second. We just need to get our timers organized here. Good. Okay, you can start, Mark. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Mark Hushel. Dear Director Daley, Chair Duarte, trustees of the Holton Catholic District School Board and student trustees, thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight. I come to you in peace and good faith in hope that you make a good, just and true choice for the good of our children, our students, our community, and in charity, praying that you do God's will. Please, dear Chair, dear Board members, dear student trustees, shine the light of Christ, a Catholic solution for our Catholic School Board. I'm here to vigorously urge you to vote against the motion before the board regarding two SLGBTQ plus initiatives and flying the pride flag. Instead, I offer a Catholic solution. Respectfully, I suggest that during month the month devoted to the Sacred Heart of Jesus, that the image of the Sacred Heart of Jesus be displayed, prayerful devotions be encouraged, and should a flag be flown, the image of the Sacred Heart of Jesus is all you need. It was clearly a very divisive situation when this sort of proposal was made last year. Also, it is short-sighted, exclusive, and in particular contrary to the teaching of the church. As you represent the Board of our Catholic Schools here in Holton, please consider the wonderful opportunity to to promote devotion to Jesus' Sacred Heart as a representation of the all-inclusive nature of our Catholic Church and thereby the School Board here in Holton. Indeed, better we use this unique and opportune situation to promote Christ and his teachings to all with no need to segregate based on any orientation, ideology, or agenda. My dear Board members, we all have different experiences, thoughts, feelings, and outlooks. We all have our strengths, our weaknesses. With all due respect, we all have our faults and failings. The Church offers solid direction to us for all aspects of our lives, spiritually, mentally, physically, emotionally, morally. Jesus calls us to him. As a church, as Christian people, we are called to evangelize. Our Catholic School Board has a unique opportunity to provide a Catholic solution to face all of life's challenges. Please help spread Jesus' gospel, not external agendas promoted the world over. After all, we live in the world, but we are not of the world. We all need to follow Christ and his good news in his way. All are due equal dignity and respect. In John's Gospel, after Jesus commanded to love one another, he reminds us in John fifteen that if the world hates you, know that it has hated me before it hated you. If you are of the world, the world would love its own. But because you are not of the world, but I chose you out of the world, therefore the world hates you. Remember the word that I said to you, a servant is not greater than his master. In Matthew eleven twenty-eight to thirty, Jesus says, "Come to me, all who labor and are heavy laden, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn from me, for I am gentle and lowly in heart, and you will find rest for your souls, for my yoke is easy and my burden is light." In Isaiah fifty-three, the suffering servant, a prophecy of Jesus, we hear, he was despised and rejected, man of sorrows, quainted with grief. Further, it goes on, he has born our griefs and carried our sorrows. If you or any student feels any of these emotions, you are in good company. You are close to Jesus. Take heart in that. He calls us to even closer communion with him. We can accomplish this through the rosary, through the sacraments. Consider reconciliation, the Holy Eucharist at Mass. Another is by devotion to the Sacred Heart of Jesus. There is room for all in Jesus' Sacred Heart. I've had the experience both at a non-Catholic high school and at Assumption here in Burlington to experience the tangible difference. I found that respect and inclusion was an inherent built-in aspect of my experience at Assumption, more than at the non-Catholic high school. I ascribe this to the faith-based aspect of my time there. Admittedly, there are many who do not share these sentiments, and there's always evidence of exclusion, differences, and difficulties. There are many factors that lead to these problems. We are called to love and respect one another, to treat all with dignity. In speaking with other parents in Burlington, I can report that there is a sense of discouragement, frustration, and anxiety due to these outside ideologies being forced on our schools and our students. Also, it distracts from Catholic teachable moments and does not make sense. The people promoting the pride flag are seen as forcing this issue in a bullying fashion. I will add that in my own personal experience with a local pride group, I was personally shouted down when I expressed my concern about their purpose and focus. Our faith promotes the virtue of humility, not pride. Promoting the pride flag has this backwards. Whether you are considering the story of the woman at the well or the woman caught in adultery, Jesus called them to him and reminded her to go and do not sin again. Remember, as Catholic Christians, we are called to share the good news of Jesus Christ. Clear, please, dear Chair Duarte, dear trustees, dear student trustees, choose love. Vote to fly the flag with the image of the Sacred Heart of Jesus. Remember the oath you took to support Catholic teaching. Now, if you could, please join me in prayer. Oh, Sacred Heart of Jesus, have mercy on us. Jesus, weak and humble of heart, make our hearts like unto thine. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mark. Really appreciate your presentation. Uh, now I shall open up the floor to trustees for questions. So we have trustees, the last questions based on your presentation only. Uh, you have three minutes for two questions. Trustee O'Brien, you you have the floor.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, one second. Let me start the stopwatch. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Hushel. Um, Mr. Hushel, thanks for having the courage to come here tonight. Um, my first question relates to something in your delegation. You said it was clearly a very divisive divisive situation when this sort of proposal was made last year. Also, it is short-sighted, exclusive. Um, you use the word exclusive. However, my experience is that the pride flag stands for nothing but inclusivity. So for clarification purposes, are you sure you used the right word? Is that what you wanted to say?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Second question, um, you also may mention of a personal experience where you were shouted down by a person from a local pride group. Now, that's pretty strong language. Um, so for clarification purposes, are you sure they didn't just disagree with you?
Well, no, it was the way the person approached it. They were very uh loud, aggressive. The 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 personal space was uh very close and 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 just the the level of emotion that was tied to it. You know, I didn't feel I had a chance to kind of really clearly speak my my mind and uh that that the interaction was very antagonistic. Further to your earlier question, um, it it was a very divisive uh situation last year. And, you know, you voted against it. There were, obviously, it was a very um very contentious situation. And um, it does exclude many people, many things. People have, you know, having lived through high school, um, you know, people have all kinds of identity issues at that time. And and this this uh flag represents only a certain aspect of things that people might have difficulties with as they develop themselves uh through their their school years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Moving down the speaker's list, we have trustee Yantamasi and then trustee Tokiva. Trustee Yantamasi, your three minutes starts. Go ahead.
Thanks for reminding me of all my time, Mr. Chair. Mark, how do I pronounce your last name?
Hushelt.
Hushel. Thank you. Um, so you talked about the role of trustees and the oath we take. Why do you think that is important, given that we are a Catholic organization serving Catholics and we are protected as per our denominational rights within the Charter of Rights?
Exactly. Um, and and I I spoke to this. We have an opportunity as Catholic Christians to, you know, to proclaim the gospel, right? Um, I I really strongly feel that our Catholic teaching is so much re- uh deeper, richer, and and all-inclusive. So uh, I think there's a huge value in that. We are set apart. We have an opportunity to hear, to to shine the light of Christ and and spread the good news of the gospel, that 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 love is for all, that everybody is due dignity and respect. And it's it's above and beyond um this kind of um solution that people are suggesting.
Follow up, Mr. Chair.
Yep, you have it.
So um, Mark, uh, if I might call you Mark, um, do you believe that what happens in the classroom is different than what we would pass tonight is in 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 flying the flag? Or do you believe that flying the flag has little or or has very little to do with what happens in the classroom, because that's operational, it's people-driven?
Absolutely. I think I think that uh, you know, we have a responsibility to these students, to all students, to 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 uh ensure that they are safe, that they're cared for, that they're they're granted dignity and respect. So, you know, I think if you're doing your job in the classroom, everybody will know that.
Thank you. We move on to the next speaker now, trustee Tokiva. Trustee Tokiva, you have the floor, three minutes, two questions.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chair. Uh, my first question is, um, what segregation would be created by flying a flag symbolic of inclusivity?
I think that uh it it limits the focus. With all due respect, it it it's relating to a particular ideology. It's relating to a particular a- a- aspect of our lives and is not all-inclusive and therefore segregates based on that. It differentiates based on that. My solution is that uh being that we represent, it's a Catholic School Board, we have a solution above and beyond that, and that's a devotion to Jesus' Sacred Heart. June has long been uh con- considered to be a month devoted to Jesus' Sacred Heart. And I think that there's many opportunities for us to to bolster an all-inclusive mentality, spirituality within our schools, and beyond that, within our families and in our culture.
Tokiva, if you have a question?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, I just have a second question. Um, I would ask, um, how do we welcome these students in our School Board um that feel unwelcome in the Catholic community through the sign of cross if uh this sign is also being um connected with homophobia?
Sorry, I missed part of the question about the cross being associated with homophobia.
Trustee Tokiva, please repeat that question.
Yeah, sorry. If um, if the cross is being, if the pride flag is being connected with um exclusivity, and we choose not to, I'm sorry, um, how how do you how do you feel uh we should welcome students who don't feel welcome in our Catholic community right now?
Exactly. I feel that all students need to be welcomed with respect, dignity, care, and love. And that does not have to rely on any other um defining aspect of their personhood than that they are all, every single one of them are due love, care, dignity, and respect. Every student, all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we shall now move down the speaker's list. We have trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you have three minutes for your two questions.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the floor. Uh, Mark, very simply. Are we judging, are we judging the whole, the actions of the represent, the reprehensible actions of the few which need to be dealt with and corrected? Are we trying out the baby with the bathwater here? We have an institution that's operated for a hundred and fifty years. We have an institution that has uh incredible, well, it has a track record to be judged by. We were not perfect. But are we, are we judging the actions of the of the whole with the with the reprehensible actions of the few?
Absolutely. I feel that that that's a risk of of how this is being perceived. You know, um, we're all aware of bullying. It happens at many times, at many life stages. Uh, I think we've probably in some way all been bullied at some point. Maybe we've even been the perpetrator perpetrator in certain circumstances. We all have to address that issue and deal with it as it is apparent, on whatever level, with whatever direction it comes from, or or is or to whoever it is directed to. We need to deal with those issues, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, can I have another question?
Yes, you have. Your time is running out. Go ahead.
So in our concerted effort, and certainly from where I'm coming from, to try to resolve the indiscretions or the the things that are wrong. I mean, do do we have to completely, completely throw out the baby baby with the bathwater?
No, never throw the baby out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, you know, further to that, once again, we have a a better answer. It's Jesus. We're Catholic Christians. You know, if we abide by his teachings, we can all do better. We all need to do better. Thank you.
Agreed, agreed.
Thank you, uh, Mark. And uh, really appreciate you coming and giving this a presentation to the Board of Trustees. Uh, and a response. Sorry, I think there are a couple of questions uh which came after I started speaking. Sorry, I think there are a couple of questions which came after I started speaking. If you can hold on, we have Trustee Yan Tomasi there. And Trustee Bowie, one second. I think Trustee Yan Tomasi has spoken. So I'll give Trustee, Trustee Yan Tomasi has spoken already. He's used his three minutes. I shall give the floor to Trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you have three minutes and two questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And through you. Thank you so much for your presentation, Mr. Hushelt. I know that we agree with the church and the cross being a symbol of inclusivity and compassion. My, my question for you is that, what would you say to students, Catholic students, who come June will look up at our flagpoles and see an absence that tells them that they're not welcome in our Catholic community?
Well, I would tell them that I'm sorry, but I, and thank you for your question, Trustee Bowie. I, I would say to them, I'm sorry that they have that perception that the lack of that flag should make them to feel that way. Many people have spoken about the purpose of the flag, that we have our Canadian flag and what that represents to us, that's common to us all. I'm merely here suggesting an alternative consideration, a Catholic Christian solution to some of these divisive and challenging contentious issues that have come up, once again, before the board.
Trustee Bowie, you still have time for your second question?
That's all my questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you for taking the time to speak with us.
Okay, so I'll continue where I left off. I want to thank you for taking the time to come and speak to the Board of Trustees. And I appreciate it. A response to the delegation will be dealt with under Agenda Item 8.1. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome. Moving on, the next order of business is the approval of the minutes. Minutes of the January 4th, 2022 regular board meeting are in your package. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 4th, 2022 regular board meeting?
Moved to Brian.
Moved by Trustee O'Brien. I need a seconder.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ohan Chanata. I'll take this to a recorded vote.
Mr. Chair, I have my hand up in the chat.
Okay, Trustee Carabella. What was your question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It has to do with the minutes about the open question period. Since that was submitted after the board meeting, this question was answered. I'd like to ask Director Daly regarding his response to the open question period. The question was very specific. It was, what was the cost of the most recent legal opinion regarding non-Catholic student trustees? And what was the cost of the previous legal opinion on the same issue? So the response was a combined cost of $11,405.66. So I would just like clarification on that and to have the cost of the most recent legal opinion. Thank you.
Director Daly?
I, I don't have that at my fingertips, but can make that correction. Sorry about that.
Okay, okay. We will make the corrections.
Thank you.
So can we take this to a vote, or do we move it to the next board meeting? We can. Three minutes, the approval of the minutes. Okay, so we'll take this to a vote. Trustee Carabella?
So, in favor, but where, where will we see the corrections then?
The Director Daly will email trustees right away after the meeting. Or sometime tomorrow?
Yeah, that'll depend maybe on what time the meeting ends.
So Director Daly will email trustees on the, the numbers that are requested and they'll proceed. So Trustee Carabella, you voted in favor, right?
Well, I, just, I don't know. I'm, I'm, yes, yes, in favor.
Okay, Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiva?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
Abstained.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Yan Tomasi?
Abstained, Mr. Chair.
So we have six in favor, two abstained. The motion carries. We shall now move on to the next order of business, and that's business arising from previous meetings. The summary of outstanding items from previous meetings is in the chart in your package for information. Next order of business are action items. Our response to the delegations. I have a few items to talk about before we continue. Trustees, do not put your hand up till I open up the floor for a motion. So any trustee who has the hand up, I'm going to ignore that and, and, and ask you once again to put your hand up. So do not put your hand up right now till I open the floor for motion. I will now ask trustees if they would like to first group all the responses together as they are similar.
Yes, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so we shall group, group all the delegations in order for one response. I will now continue, okay? In accordance with our board bylaws and policy R-06, delegations to the board, we have four options. Trustees may move a motion to,
A, make a decision today on the matter.
Before the matter to your future meeting, request a staff report on this matter. We consider it in a future meeting and receive the delegation as information. The floor is now open to trustees who may want to put a motion on the floor on how to proceed with the delegations. We have decided to move them all together, so we have Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, you have four choices to make, and I'll let you speak to that. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move that we receive the delegations as information.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to receive the delegations as information. I will ask for a seconder.
I'll second.
We have Vice Chair Agnew, two seconds. I shall now open up the floor for discussion, if any. Seeing none, I shall call a recorded vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanata?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiva?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Yan Tomasi? Trustee Yan Tomasi?
Yeah, I'm frozen here, Mr. Chair. Bear with me. I'm in favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
The motion carries. We shall now move on to the next item. Item 8.2, Action Items Strengthening Community Relationship. The following is a notice of motion from the January 4th regular board meeting. Vice Chair Agnew, please read the motion.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Be a resolve that staff present an update on all 2S LGBTQ+ training initiatives at the June 7th, 2022 board meeting regarding the training completed in 2022 thus far, including details on the ongoing partnership and participation of community organizations who have a specific focus on 2S LGBTQ+ resources and supports. And be a further resolve that as one of the next steps in supporting our diverse school communities and to ensure we fully support the pillar of belonging, that the Director of Education direct Hilton Catholic District School Board staff to purchase all necessary elements to fly the pride flag and to fly the flag for the month of June, every June, beginning in 2022 at all Hilton Catholic District School Board schools and the Catholic Education Center.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I will now need a seconder for this motion.
I'll second it. Trustee Guzzo?
Trustee Guzzo, seconds. I will now open up the floor for discussion. Before that, Vice Chair Agnew, you have five minutes to talk to your motion.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. While flying a pride flag is not the only way to show acceptance and respect for the 2S LGBTQ+ people, the flag has become an internationally recognized way for communities and organizations to support and acknowledge their 2S, their 2S LGBTQ+ members. Our unwillingness to do so can lead to further stigmatization of this community and our school communities, sadly many of whom have already, already feel stigmatized or excluded. This is not about sex or sexuality or sexual acts. This is not about turning our back on our faith or on our religion. This is not about being leftist or woke or virtue signaling. This isn't about politics. This is about people, and this is about love, and this is about accepting everyone for who they are and who they love and how they choose to live their life. This motion, this proposal to raise the pride flag is about actively showing through a universal symbol our support for our staff, students, families, community members, that our schools are a safe place where they belong and they are always welcomed. So many hateful comments have come through at the mere mention of the pride flag, comments and rhetoric that do not even deserve to be repeated ever again. And as such, I will reference them in my dialogue tonight. But important to know that there are people who are the subject of these bars, these judgmental and vile comments, God's children, fellow human beings, friends, family members, strangers, who have had these words hurled at them all the time. I feel the sting of these words, and I am not a member of the 2S LGBTQ+ community, so I cannot even begin to fully comprehend how they must feel. To know there are people out there who will do anything to ensure that individuals who identify as 2S LGBTQ+ are not welcome, not accepted, and frankly, not tolerated. The failed attempt to have the pride flag flown last year across the HGBSB reaffirmed the ongoing feelings of intolerance, exclusion, and rejection that are already experienced by many of our staff, students, and families. I urge everyone listening tonight and those around the table to take a moment to really think about what it must be like to be a student or staff or family member of our school community who identifies as 2S LGBTQ+, to know that they are often viewed as less than or unworthy, to be told repeatedly that you are accepted, but only conditionally. You will have heard from several of our delegates this evening who have lived experience and to share with us just small glimpses of what they have had to endure at our schools. Earlier today, I received this message, and I'm going to read it for you. "I am a secondary teacher in the HGBSB. I was very scared to work with the Catholic board because of my identity. However, your motion to fly the flag and the support that I have seen from countless teachers has really inspired me to continue being myself. During one of my lessons about LGBTQ rights, I came out to my students. In return, many students started sharing their experiences with me and shared the hatred that they have faced because of who they are. When I was a teenager, I had a lot of self-esteem and self-harm issues because at the time I had zero support and the homophobia even worse. God truly works in wonderful ways, as he brought many people into my life, that brought me out from my really dark times and helped me to come to terms with who I am. I hope we can do the same for our students and show them the endless love that God has for them. The gesture of raising the pride flag is a strong demonstration of allyship and solidarity with members of the 2S LGBTQ+ community in Hilton region, across the country and around the world. Preventing equal access to representation is a disservice to the 2S LGBTQ+ community. As students spend a significant proportion of their time each day in the school environment, it is particularly important for them to feel safe and accepted at our schools. All schools in Ontario have a legal duty under the Education Act and Ontario Human Rights Code to ensure a school environment free from harassment and other forms of discrimination identified under the code. This includes discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. In other words, under the code, the HGBSB has an obligation to make sure LGBTQ+ students and staff can learn and work in a respectful and welcoming environment. The presentation from our student trustees this evening was clear on the need to be inclusive in our actions and reiterated the need for belonging, as well as speaking specifically to the raising of the pride flag. The quote from the HGBSB Student Senate Catholic Faith and Action Standing Committee Chairs really stuck with me. For anyone who missed it, here it is. Love, a concept deeply rooted in Christian belief and a cornerstone in Catholic teachings. For each time a student in our Hilton Catholic District School Board struggles with self-acceptance and finds difficulty receiving support, it is incredibly pertinent to our Catholic social teaching that we take responsibility and carry out justice for our fellow people. We are one human family, no matter our differentiating identities and ideologies. We are one body, individual members of one another. It is through demonstrating inclusion that we may love and respect all members of our family. Raising the pride flag is an opportunity to promote God's bountiful and unconditional love for all of His children. For those who have said to me, we are called to love all people but, I say there can be no but. There is only love, period. Please let us fly the flag."
Thank you, Vice Chair. Now I shall open up the floor to debate. Each trustee has three minutes to debate the, the motion on the table, which has been seconded. And so on the speakers list, we have Trustee Yan Tomasi, Trustee Guzzo, Trustee Ohan Chanata, Trustee O'Brien, Trustee Tokiva, Trustee Masri Amar, and the list, and, and Trustee Carabella and Trustee De Rosa. Trustee Yan Tomasi, you have the floor. Three minutes starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to speak to Trustee Guzzo's motion. As I look at the motion from April 26th, 2021, I see that this particular motion is pretty much identical with a couple of extra items on it. I would propose to the board that this particular matter be dealt with as something previously adopted. There is no change. It's about flying the flag, albeit there are several other elements that are part of this particular motion. As such, I would ask the chair to rule on the fact that this particular matter be dealt with as something previously adopted.
Thank you, Trustee Yan Tomasi. I have the motion from, motion number 117, stroke 21, from the April 26th board meeting. And I have the current motion here.
Mr. Chair, I need a second before you can rule on it.
I'll second it.
No, what was it? What was your motion? You did not put a motion. Was it a motion or was the clarification?
I said that I would propose that this particular matter be dealt with as something previously adopted. That in itself is a motion.
So, this is the way I would like it?
In our bylaws.
Trustee Yan Tomasi, this is like-
Do you have the floor, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I, I heard what, heard what you had to say, but I did not hear that it was a motion. When you have a motion, you got to say, I move-
I said no. I said I propose that we deal with this matter as something previously adopted. Something previously adopted is a specific motion under Robert Rules of Order. Our particular bylaws do not deal with it. So I ask you to deal with that and bring it to the floor as something previously adopted. Thank you.
Okay, so you, so you have a motion here. Let me make a note. Okay, so you, Trustee Yan Tomasi moved. And Trustee O'Brien, do you second it?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Trustee O'Brien, seconded. So Trustee Yan Tomasi, you have five minutes?
You have a order?
Okay, Trustee Murphy?
The, the motion is not in order because it is not the same motion. It's a completely different motion and therefore has not been previously adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy. Sorry. Thank you, Trustee Murphy. I ruled that the motions are different.
Mr. Chair, before you make your ruling, may I draw your attention that trustee-
Trustee Antomasi.
Has not stated-
Trustee Antomasi. I'm ruling on a point of order. It will be quiet. So my ruling that the two motions are distinct and different. And that your motion, your motion is out of order.
Mr. Chair, I feel that ruling.
Chair, that is incorrect.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I feel-
I hear, I hear an appeal from trustee O'Brien. I shall take it. Do we have a second for that, the appeal?
I will second.
So trustee-
Mr. Chair, before your appeal, can I address your-
No, no.
Your decision.
You do not have the floor, trustee Antomasi.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
You don't have the floor right now.
My point of order stems from the fact that you need to tell the board what it is and how you're ruling and what specific bylaw you're using. And if you're not using a bylaw, please draw our attention to the Robert Rules of Order that you're using and making those decisions.
Trustee-
Fail in that, can you please ask the Parliament-
You do not have the floor.
Help you make a ruling.
Trustee Antomasi, you do not have the floor. I'm ruling on an appeal by trustee O'Brien. That the two-
No, you have a ruling before that, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Antomasi, please do not interrupt. We have, we have a lot of people watching us and I'd like you to behave in a very respectful way. You have the motion on the floor. We need to debate it and move on. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
So trustee-
Mr. Chair, could we get a-
Trustee, trustee, trustee Carabella, just hold on a minute. I'm trying to collect my thoughts. So we have trustee, trustee O'Brien is appealing. I'm just making my notes. We have a point of order from trustee Murphy. Which I have ruled that it's the motion on the floor is out of order. Trustee O'Brien is appealing that. Now, I will keep this on hold and listen to trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, what's your question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to ask about a parliamentary inquiry into what trustee Antomasi is asking for.
So first, let's complete the appeal and then let's come back to trustee Antomasi's question. Okay? So trustee O'Brien is appealing my decision.
Point of order. You can't, point of order, Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm not accepting the point of order right now. I'm first dealing with the appeal on the, on the floor. Okay?
But I'm dealing with the-
I'm taking, I'm taking a vote on that.
You're not going in sequence.
Trustee Antomasi, I'm going to take a vote on the appeal and then I'll come back to your point of order. I cannot have multiple things happening at the same time. Okay, so I'm dealing with the appeal by trustee O'Brien on my ruling that the two motions are distinct. Okay, so I'll go down the list. So trustee Ohan Chanota, how do you vote? Do you vote in favor of the appeal or are you opposed to the appeal?
No, I'm opposed to the appeal.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie.
Opposed.
Trustee Mastri Amar.
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiva.
Opposed.
Vice Chair Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi.
Mr. Chair, you're not following procedure, but I'm-
Trustee Antomasi, I've called a vote. How do you vote?
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair, but you're not doing it correctly.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
And I am, trustee Duarte is opposed. So it's four in favor, five opposed. The appeal fails. We are now going back to trustee Murphy's point of order, which we clearly determined that the two motions are different. Trustee Carabella has brought a request to consult the parliamentarian. And I will call on, I'll use my discretion and call on Parliamentarian Kapoor to comment to me. Parliamentarian Kapoor.
Mr. Chair.
Parliamentarian Kapoor, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? Thank you, Chair.
De Rosa, no comment at this point in time.
Point of order.
Trustee.
Point of order.
Just one other. Trustee Ohan, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to recognize bylaw 10.5, which states authority to speak. Any member desiring to speak shall indicate by upraised hand and await recognition by the Chair. I'd appreciate if we could go by those bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanota. Your point of order-
My hand is up, Mr. Chair.
Is, is in order. Trustee De Rosa, you have your hand up now after the point of order. So you please wait in the queue. I had been conversing with Parliamentarian Kapoor. Parliamentarian Kapoor, you have the floor to give me your comments.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not exactly certain what trustee Carabella's question was that she wanted me to comment on or what you specifically wanted me to comment on, Chair.
So trustee Carabella, can you clarify?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to clarify what trustee Antomasi was asking about the motion. To be a motion of something previously adopted and for you to judge that first motion and how this motion relates. I wanted a parliamentary-
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Thank you. Thank you. I got it. So Parliamentarian Kapoor, there was a motion 117 stroke 21. That was passed in the April 26th board meeting. And we have the motion on the floor by Vice Chair Agnew. And I did take a look at the motion and it is my understanding that there are two distinct motions. And there's nothing overlapping there. Nothing has been acted upon. So I'm wondering what's your opinion on that?
Fortunately for me, Chair, I agreed with your ruling that the motion to treat as, to move something previously, amend something previously amended. Was out of order. That was the correct ruling and fortunately it was upheld on appeal. The ruling is, is yours that there's not a, not anything that needs to be amended in that motion in order for this motion to be heard. And considered and voted upon.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Kapoor. My, my ruling stands. So I shall now move on to, back to the speaker's list. Trustee Antomasi. You do not have the floor. You had the floor. You're done. Trustee Antomasi, you do not have the-
How can I be done? I'm asking for a further point of order, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I can't be done if I ask for another-
I did not hear your point of order, trustee Antomasi. You will not raise your voice.
My point of order stands-
Order, order. You will not raise your voice to the Chair.
They move that you're incompetent, that you're not up to the task.
Your mic is going to be cut off.
Oh, for heaven's sakes.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo.
I'm sorry, I, I just, some of the comments that are made and comments in specifically that you aren't doing your job are offside and inappropriate.
Yes, trustee Guzzo, your, your point of order is well taken. I am asking trustees to maintain order. I'm going to ask trustees again to maintain order. This is, it's, it's not an easy topic that we are discussing right now. I'd like to ask everybody to maintain decorum. Okay, so we shall move on. Oh, we have some housekeeping to do. Trustee Guzzo, before we do that, we have some housekeeping. It's 11 o'clock. We need to take a vote to extend the meeting to 11:30. I shall take a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar.
In favor.
Trustee Tokiva.
In favor.
Trustee, Vice Chair Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi.
Favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanota.
In favor.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. The motion carries. We shall extend to 11:30. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So it takes no compromise to give people their rights. It takes no money to respect the individual.
Can I interrupt you? Can I interrupt you?
Well, you just did.
I apologize. I apologize. We have the timer around three minutes, please. Okay, go ahead. One second.
I, I'm not going to be longer than three minutes, Mr. Chair, but this is going to take longer than three minutes now.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Guzzo. Go ahead.
Thank you. It takes no compromise to give people their rights. It takes no money to respect the individual. It takes no political deal to give people freedom. It takes no survey to remove repression. Harvey Milk. We've received a lot of correspondence and heard a lot of what people believe we should be doing when it comes to the 2S LGBTQ plus. Plus community, people who have fear using the Bible to justify hurtful hateful comments and condemn our students, staff, community members. How can one choose to listen to these comments that say, I accept you but? Jesus's love did not come with a caveat. I instead reiterate what I have said before. I am and always will be an ally and I say to our students, staff, parents, and community. All who are somebody's child and especially children of God. I love you no matter what. If you want to talk to me, thank you for trusting me. I respect and admire your self-awareness. If you should need me, I'm always here to talk about anything. What is the best way for me to support you? And I promise to learn from you. And lastly, I will always stand with you and fight for you. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. Martin Luther King Jr. Fly the flag.
Thank you. Moving down the speaker's list, we have trustee Ohan Chanota. Trustee Ohan Chanota, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Fellow trustees and colleagues, last year when our board was discussing the issue of flying the pride flag and training initiatives, I had indicated, and I quote. That if one student felt unsafe, that was one too many for me. That has not changed over the past months. Honestly, I'm a little tired of this issue being politicized, sexualized, seen as demoralizing and demonized from some. It needs to be humanized. I have received multiple communications from constituents to support this initiative the last time it was brought to the board. And the same has occurred over the past few weeks. And yes, I've also received communication indicating the opposite opinions. However, I must simplify this issue. If we can be the reason that one student does not cry themselves to sleep at night as they feel invisible in our care, we must vote yes. Or if we have an opportunity to be a part of a solution to eliminate even one family from dealing with mental illness or the suicide of a child, we must vote yes. If we can remove any negative in any way, we must vote yes. It is with all due respect that I say this answer is really quite simple. If it was my child struggling and by utilizing a visual flag to acknowledge their existence and add continuing training opportunities. I would do everything in my power to make that happen. As a trustee, it is a responsibility to do everything we can to foster our lived Catholic school experience for our students. Our staff, our families, and assist where necessary to ensure it continues to improve. My vote yes is what I can do about that. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanota. Moving next down the speaker's list. On the speaker's list, we have trustee O'Brien, trustee Tokiva, trustee Mastri Amar. Trustee Carabella and the trustees, but right now we'll jump to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien is the floor. Three minutes.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you trustee Agnew for bringing this motion forward. Your, your compassion for the marginalized and victimized students is absolutely contagious. I have one little amendment that I would like to put forward to the be it further resolved. So if we can move to that. And my amendment is this, I moved that the phrase, after the phrase pride flag. There be inserted the phrase. And the Canadian Indigenous flag. Can we have that on the screen, please? Mr. Chair.
Hold on.
And while that's happening, if those of you who don't know what the Canadian Indigenous flag is, I'm sure most of you do. You can quickly Google it. And I sent a copy to Rosie, but I'm sure most of you already know what that is anyway. So again, after the phrase pride flag, there be inserted the phrase and the Canadian Indigenous flag.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Can I put you on a pause? Ms. Swindon is working on the, on the changes to the motion.
No worries.
Give us a minute. While we are doing this, do we have a second for that?
I haven't finished, Mr. Chair.
I will second.
Trustee De Rosa, you let, you let it pause it. You let it pause because trustee O'Brien is not finished.
Okay. Then three words later, after the word fly, we strike out the phrase flag and insert the phrase both flags.
Is Ms. Swindon working on that? Okay, go ahead.
You're looking for a secondor?
Not yet. Trustee O'Brien, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So that it reads, do you want me to read it?
Go ahead.
Be it further resolved that as one of the next steps in supporting our diverse school communities and to ensure we fully support the pillar of belonging. That the Director of Education direct Houghton Catholic District School Board staff to purchase all necessary elements to fly the pride flag and the Canadian Indigenous flag. And to fly both flags for the month of June, every June, beginning 2022. At all Houghton Catholic District School Boards and the Catholic Education Centre. Mr. Chair, I've got a point of clarification.
So if that's done, I shall ask for a second for us. Trustee O'Brien?
I will second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, trustee De Rosa seconds. Trustee O'Brien, you have five minutes to talk to this.
And Mr. Chair, before it begins with five minutes, one quick question. Is Sherry Seville with us tonight?
I'll check with Director Julie. Trustee O'Brien, Ms. Seville, start with us.
No worries.
So you have five minutes and give me a second while the timer starts. Okay, we are maintaining the time here. You have five minutes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I have a point of clarification. I put it in the chat. I didn't want to interrupt.
Okay, I'll allow that. Trustee Bowie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have an inquiry. Since this motion, as it is amended, deals with two separate issues, in my opinion. Would it be possible for us to split it up into two distinct motions to vote on as we have done in the past? Or would that be following the ratification of the amendment?
Trustee Bowie, this request generally comes at the beginning of, of the discussion. In my opinion, we have begun the discussion and deliberations on this right now. So let's, let's roll with it the way it is.
Mr. Chair. I have the floor.
Trustee, yes, thank you, trustee Bowie. Trustee O'Brien, your five minutes starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I haven't been recognized.
I have the floor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Antomasi, you are not recognized. Trustee O'Brien is the floor.
But I have to be recognized. I'm speaking to a point of order that was made, that was put forth by trustee, student trustee-
Trustee Antomasi, we are on a different topic right now.
No, we're not on a different topic. Mr. Chair, you need to follow the topic. I just said-
Trustee Antomasi.
Of order to the statement made by the student-
Trustee Antomasi, you do not have the floor. Trustee O'Brien, trustee Antomasi, you do not have the floor. You are out of order. Trustee O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Every June, we take the time to acknowledge the importance and absolute value of two most necessary community partners. The 2S LGBTQ- The 2SLGBTQ+ community and our Indigenous brothers and sisters. Without these two, the body of Christ is less. Without these two groups, our Catholic community is not complete. Since we do attribute the month of June to both groups, would it not be the greatest act of inclusivity if these two flags flew together? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. I shall now open up a new speaker's list and ask if the trustee is willing to talk to this. So the previous speaker's list ended with Trustee Murphy. Let me just check the list. Okay, Trustee Yantamasi, I see your hand up here. Are you speaking to the amendment? Or are you on the previous speaker's list?
I just put my hand up. Eleven twelve, Mr. Chair. I'm speaking to this particular amendment to shed light on the fact that this particular amendment to the motion is an impossibility. First and foremost, if we follow proper protocol... Let me back up. So our board, from its inception, has only installed one poll with the thought that we would only be flying the Canadian flag. Subsequent to that, we have entertained and have recognized the motion put forward by Trustee Agnew, which is asking the board to consider flying the 2SLGBTQ flag, the pride flag. We, from a flag perspective, we only have one poll. If we fly two polls, fly two flags simultaneously, that would preclude from flying the Canadian flag. That is an impossibility, simply because it's somewhat physically impossible. So I would propose the following. Given that back in April twenty six, before April twenty six, our Indigenous people...
Chair, is this an amendment to an amendment? I don't understand. Please...
I'm trying to understand.
I'm giving background to the impossibility of the current amendment to the motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I do not hear a point of order. So if you are done, we shall continue with the speaker's list.
I haven't even finished. I'm only halfway through.
Okay, you still have a minute and a half left. Go ahead.
Do I recoup the time that I've lost in your interjection, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, speak. I'm keeping track of time. Go ahead.
From a procedural point of view, back in April 2021, our Indigenous people formally provided the board with their intent and asked to fly the Indigenous flag. That particular intent came before Trustee Agnew put forward the original motion. The motion is exactly the same. We're talking about flying the flag. You can't fly two flags simultaneously. Our Indigenous people have the right and have been recognized by Parliament through an act of Parliament to fly their national flag. The national flag, as it pertains to our Indigenous people, comes in many forms. And it's specific to the area that we're speaking to. And in the case of Houghton Catholic, it speaks to our Indigenous people, which have the right to fly the flag. So this particular motion cannot be fulfilled. It's invalid.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order.
Thank you, Trustee Yantamasi.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I like to see that referenced about this act that it can't fly with another flag. I'm sorry, but I...
They're taking any of the flag, Mr. ...
Trustees, trustees, you're not discussing a debate. Trustee O'Brien, you'll have your time to close debate. Trustee Yantamasi has finished his three minutes. Trustee Guzo, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name before. Trustee Guzo, you're on the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. It's just a clarifying question to Trustee O'Brien. He's stating the Canadian Indigenous Flag. I'm unaware of a Canadian Indigenous Flag. I thought I understood that each nation had its own flag. Unless... And I could be wrong. But if Trustee O'Brien can clarify which flag he's referring to.
I would love to... Mr. Chair?
Trustee O'Brien, go ahead.
Yes, there is a Canadian... You're right, Trustee Guzo, thank you for bringing that up. Every nation does have their own flag. However, there is a Canadian Indigenous Flag. You can Google it. I did send a copy to Rosie. I don't know if she wants to put it up or not. But there is one that's been designated as the Canadian Indigenous Flag.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien.
We could see that. I think that's a good point, Trustee Guzo. If we could just see it.
Trustee Guzo, follow up?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. That was it. I just was looking for clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have speakers on the list. I shall now take this to a recorded vote. We are going to vote on the amendment. As we see on the screen, the amendment has been moved by Trustee O'Brien. Trustee De Rosa seconded.
Mr. Chair, can I just close?
Oh, sorry. Trustee O'Brien, please close. I'm sorry. My apologies. Go ahead. Trustee O'Brien, go ahead.
To acknowledge one community without the other is just not right. And flying the flag for both community partners is the ultimate act of inclusiveness to the month of June. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. I shall now call the vote. Vice Chair Agnew? Vice Chair Agnew?
I'm thinking.
Do you want me to come back to...
Yes, please.
Trustee De Rosa?
Mr. Chair, would you grant me the same privilege of coming back?
Sure. Trustee Guzo?
I would like the same privilege.
Sure. Trustee Yantamasi?
Mr. Chair, can you recap what it is that we're voting on?
Trustee Yantamasi, with the motion you see on your screen right there, the changes in the blue and strike out of...
Can you refer to it as the amendment to the motion then?
Sure, that's what I said.
Thank you.
That's what I said.
I'm against.
Okay, Trustee Yantamasi is against. Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanata?
I will have to oppose, as I'm not sure that we know the community wants the flag to be flown. So I oppose.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Masri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiwa?
Opposed.
Coming back to Vice Chair Agnew?
I'm opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guzo?
I'm opposed because I don't think we can make a decision for a group that hasn't been consulted.
So we have two in favor. Six opposed. The amendment fails. We shall now go back to the main motion. And the speaker's list is Trustee Tokiwa. You're on the floor.
So we're now discussing trustee...
The main motion.
A main... Okay, thank you, sorry. Over this... I'll turn my camera on, sorry. And should I wait for the timer?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Over this past year, and especially in recent weeks, it has been moving to see how much community involvement this motion has elicited. And to see students coming together to support this has been a big motivation in my support. To see so many people coming together to advocate for love and acceptance has truly been moving. I do understand and appreciate the apprehension held by some, and I respect it. But what I'm seeing as a student is people don't feel safe to be themselves at schools. And I think it's really difficult to grow and learn without being yourself and feeling safe in your school environment. As a multiply minority, I have experienced discrimination myself, and I understand the importance of representation. I know the cross and the Canadian flag are supposed to represent everyone. But sometimes our efforts need to be a bit more specific. Just as we have multiple colored shirt days and anti-bullying posters in schools, the pride flag shows LGBTQ+ students that we accept them, that we love them, and that we support them receiving a fulsome education in the HCDSB, just like every other student. Coming from my perspective, as a student immersed in the everyday environment of school and extracurriculars, I see hate all the time. I've experienced hate, but I've also experienced so much love and support and nurturing in our schools. And that's what I want to be highlighted at the end of the day. That's what I want students to experience every day. And I think without the pride flag being flown respectfully outside all schools in the HCDSB, any efforts to do this will be overshadowed. Some of the conversations this evening have surrounded about sin and sex. This isn't about sex. This is about love. This is about respecting people the way they are created in the image of God. We have the chance to set an example of what we want our schools to look like here at this board table right now. People are looking to us. I hope this motion is passed because I came into this position to represent students' voice and to amplify the voices of those who are marginalized. And right now, the LGBTQ+ community is marginalized. Following our Catholic social teachings, we must fight in solidarity with these groups and uplift them, because that's what Jesus would do. And as Catholics, that's kind of the whole point of positions like these. The pride flag is something we can agree to fly right now as a tangible, current sign of support and acceptance. It won't solve everything, but it is the next step forward in fostering safe and inclusive spaces in our boards. I'd just like to quote one Bible verse now. Romans, Chapter 2, 1 through 29. "Do you suppose, O man, you who judge those who practice such things and yet do them yourself, that you will escape the judgment of God? Or do you presume on the riches of His kindness and forbearance and patience, not knowing that God's kindness is meant to lead you to repentance? But because of your hard and impenetrable heart, you are storing up wrath for yourself on the day of wrath, when God's righteous judgment will be revealed." Thank you.
Thank you. We now move down the speaker's list. We have Trustee Carabella, then Trustee De Rosa, Trustee Bowie, and Trustee Murphy. Trustee Carabella, you're on the floor for debate.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair. You skipped over Trustee Masri Amar.
Oh, I canceled the name. Okay, sorry. Trustee Carabella, if you hold on for a second. Trustee Masri Amar, you have the floor.
And I'm on the list too, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee O'Brien, you're on the list for questions.
Mr. Chair, I'm on the list for debate.
Have you marked as done for debate, Trustee O'Brien?
Mr. Chair, point of order, that was an amendment.
Okay, you want to classify that as an amendment? I can move...
Yes, it was an amendment, Mr. Chair. I have three minutes to debate. Thank you.
I'll put you back. Okay, Trustee Masri Amar, you're on the floor. Three minutes starts now.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have the opportunity to show members of the 2SLGBTQ+ community that they're welcomed in our schools and they matter. Growing up in a different country, a lot of things changed when I moved here. It was a huge culture shock, but something that I always had was my faith. No matter what language you practice your faith in or where you learn it, but the message is always the same. God is love. He will always love His children because He made us who we are. And I believe that He made us in His image and likeness, and we're all equal representations of who He is. I'm not a member of this community, and I will never be able to fully understand everything that they have been through. By rising the flag, we show members of the community that they're heard and they matter. We're always taught in school to never exclude anyone or any group of people, because that is something Jesus would never do. Let's be respectful today and think about what our faith calls us to do. And that is why we'll be in favor of this motion, representing the voice of the students.
Thank you, Trustee Masri Amar. We shall now move on to Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you have three minutes for debate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But what I want to ask here is also what the previous student trustee requested, the subdivision of question about separating this motion into two. And I understand you gave her a response. But could the parliamentarian weigh in on that? Whether it's too late to do that, or if that's only allowed to be done at the beginning? I still find that since there are no amendments and they're easily separated, we could achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I did state my opinion and my ruling. But I'd be happy to ask the parliamentarian if you could provide some comments. Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Thank you, Chair. That previous ruling was regarding an amendment, which was a bit... It made it a little more complicated. The motion to divide is usually made at the beginning of debate, but can be made during debate. That would require you, Chair, to make a ruling on whether these presents two distinct proposal propositions, or not.
So, so Trustee Carabella, as we have started our discussions, and we had a round of amendments, and we're back to the main motion, I'd like to stick to my ruling that we continue debate and discussion as we are right now. So do you have anything to say to this, Trustee Carabella?
No, thank you.
Okay, moving down the speaker's list, we have Trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you for the floor, Mr. Chair. Are we debating the original motion now, Mr. Chair, or something else?
Yes, yes, Trustee De Rosa. The motion, as you see on the screen.
Okay, so just a few words. I will be brief. So thank you for the floor. I'm hopeful that I will be allowed to deliver my message free of muting and interruptions, Mr. Chair. But I will be brief, I promise. Thank you to all the parents, ratepayers, and students who have reached out. Again, after only seven months, that trustees overwhelmingly supported last June's pride celebrations and committed to reviewing long-term strategies to support the 2SLGBTQ+ and other minorities in our schools. This issue is coming back to us again, simply because our board did not fly the pride flag. Again, like then, this debate has been relaunched at our most vulnerable moment and against... And is again dividing our Catholic family at a time when COVID still creates, is creating havoc to our schools. I worry, Mr. Chair, about using a simple and symbolic solution to fix long-term problems. I worried about that seven months ago, and I still continue to worry about it. I worry about the politics surrounding this issue. And with all due respect, I trust that my fellow trustees are not playing to politics, the politics, unfortunately. I will somehow find their way into the discussion. And I am seriously worried about that. I worry about the impact of our community on our organization and our denominational rights enshrined in this constitution. But more particularly, Mr. Chair, I worry about creating expectations in the minds of our students, in the minds of our minors, as to being a gesture that will resolve all their problems. We all know, unfortunately, that this is a long-term issue. It's been an issue that's been front and center, not only for the 2SLGBTQ community, but for all minorities. And, you know, as much as we all have the goodwill of wanting to resolve this issue, it is not an easy one to resolve. If I can impart my own opinion and my own experience, I think the solution, to some degree, relies in developing the confidence and developing the self-assurance and the self-love that these marginalized minorities require. That will be somewhat achieved by a flag, but certainly will not provide the long-term solution that we all want. I do want to make the point that not supporting a short-term solution does not characterize or put people in a place where they're either homophobic or prejudiced or insensitive or unloving. In fact, Mr. Chair, when we have the responsibility of our kids under our care, we are responsible for preparing them for life. And unfortunately, when the minorities and these individuals... And unfortunately, when, when the minorities and these individuals, these students, these, these students leave us after four years. They carry their issues with them. So thank you very much for indulging me, Mr. Chair. I don't have the clock in the front of me, so I can't, I can't see how much time I'm using. So I have said what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Moving down the speaker's list, we have trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor and you have three minutes.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to double check. Do we have to vote to extend?
Yeah, point of order, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. You're so engrossed in the meeting. So yes, you're right. We have housekeeping to do. We shall now vote to extend the meeting by thirty minutes. I'll take a recorded vote. Trustee De Rosa.
I'm in favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Trustee Honchanata.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar.
In favor.
Trustee Tokiwa.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew.
In favor.
And trustee Duat is in favor. We have one opposed. However, we have to finish the item on the table. So we shall move on down the speaker's list to trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor, three minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And through you, I know that it's been a long meeting, and I know that the past year where the board has been, you know, facing with this decision has been tough for everyone. And I know that it's been faced with a lot of conversations and discussions and hate, whether that be, you know, on social media, in our inboxes, whether that be fighting within our community. And I just want to come to you today as a student trustee with no external obligations to speak for the voice of our students. I implore you, when you all make this decision, to push all of the rest out of your minds and make it with them in mind. There are students who come June will walk through our doors and will either see a distinct absence in front of our schools or will see a sign of support. For our students who feel isolated from our community and as a result are unable to achieve the fullest and engage fully in our Catholic community, this will be a symbol for them that they can strive for their best in our schools, that our schools are their home. For our students who have become withdrawn and disconnected from Catholicism and our faith-based community, this will be a sign to them that they are still welcomed, that they are still accepted, and that they still have a place in our schools. For we have students who are wrestling with their identities currently and feel that they can't talk to anyone in our schools about it. This is a sign for them that they can, that they have a space, a safe space, to be able to share what bothers them. Now, a lot of discussion in this meeting has, has revolved around perhaps what this will do for students and perhaps what this will not do for students. What I know that this will do for students is we have students that have used our faith and that have behind Jesus's name hurt and harmed their peers in our schools because decisions like this have told them that is okay. What we have the opportunity to do here tonight is to show all of our students that A, they are welcomed and accepted, and that B, exclusion and bullying on the basis of sexuality and gender orientation is not welcome in our schools. I come to you today as a Catholic student. I've been a member of the Halton Catholic District School Board since junior kindergarten. In my thirteen years of education, I have learned that Jesus's love, that God's mercy, and that the Catholic community is open to all. My experience at the HCDSB is the reason that I am who I am today. Is the reason that I've had the success that I have, that I am able to speak with you all today. It is the reason why I'm advocating for the adoption of this motion. The school community that I was able to grow up in preached nothing but love and compassion and acceptance. And throughout my entire educational career inside of our doors, I have felt nothing but community and family and a whole Catholic community of staff and a board and trustees and students who support me and are committed to my success. I'm asking you all, I'm pleading for you all to adopt this motion because I cannot stand here and reckon with the idea that any student would not be able to have the experience that I have in our schools. That any student would not be able to experience the same welcoming and empowering community that I have had the pleasure to experience. Being a student of the Halton Catholic District School Boards has been one of the best things that has ever happened to me. I cherish the memories that I have here, and I know that it has been the reason why I am so strong in my faith, strong in who I am, and strong in my success as I am today. No student should be denied that opportunity. And I'm standing here today because I firmly believe that every single student who walks into our doors should have the same.
He has three minutes.
Thank you.
Trustee Bowie. We shall now move. Did I hear a point of order or? Okay, moving down the speaker's list, we have trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, you have three minutes and go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Bowie. That was fantastic. Last year, we committed to a journey of learning and acceptance. We need to continue this journey by engaging in honest reflection and by having the courage to seek informed input, which will help evolve and form our future actions. Our students and staff are telling us that we need to do more. They are asking us to fly the flag to confirm that we as a board are committed to building safe and welcoming spaces by telling us that flying the pride flag represents acceptance and inclusion. There are some who disagree. But we, there's two important questions we have to ask ourselves. How does our Catholic faith teach us to treat people who identify as two SLGTP+? Are we taught to condemn and reject? Are we taught to tolerate? Are we taught to accept or to value? As was introduced to us when we did a training session with Michael Wastener. The second important question is what is our duty of care? Your answer to question one will no doubt impact the answer to question two. I believe we are called to value those who identify as two SLGTP+ as God has called us to do with all people. And therefore, our duty of care is to provide a safe and supportive environment. My objective as a trustee is to do good. And if we as a board can't do good, then we should at least do no harm. Our school community is telling us that we will be doing harm if we do not fly the flag. The lived experiences we have heard tonight and over the last seven months are evidence of this harm. Therefore, I will support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Moving down the speaker's list, we have trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Catholics, we are taught that we must love our neighbor and treat every individual as a child of God, accepted with respect, compassion, and sensitivity. Parents make a clear choice when they decide that their children will attend a Catholic school. They rightly expect that trustees, principals, teachers, all partners in education will ensure that Catholic teaching is presented, lived, and infused in all that we do. In that regard, the appropriate symbol that represents our faith and the inclusion and acceptance of others is the cross. It is the primary symbol of our Christian faith. It draws us to contemplate the generous and sacrificial love of Jesus as he lays down his life for all of us. Practically, we also know that there are any number of groups working to advocate for many diverse causes. For this reason, many school boards wisely fly only the Canadian flag out of a sense of equity for all. There is a belief among some that unless one embraces secular symbols, one cannot be inclusive or accepting. This is simply not true. Where there are cases of injustice and mistreatment of any student, whether they are bullied or rejected due to their sexual orientation, appearance, race, sex, or any other reason, we must seize the moment, address the situation, ensure that we lead by example as we foster a culture of care and love for every individual. That truth is perfectly represented in our most fundamental Catholic symbol, the cross. We also recognize that there are times when the presentation of Catholic teaching will clash with the views held by many in society. Whether these relate to human sexuality, the sanctity of life, issues of social justice, or other deeply held beliefs. Those who are faithful to these teachings are often ridiculed, mocked, and excluded. Frequently, since the time of Jesus, Christian teaching is not aligned with currently prevailing opinions. And this is from, that is from the Catholic Pastoral Centre of the Archdiocese of Toronto. My fellow trustees, keep in mind that we did vote to keep the term distinctly Catholic in our vision statement. And Mr. Chair, if I could be permitted to ask one question?
Sure, trustee O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, through you to Superintendent Merrick. Superintendent Merrick, what would be the cost to the board if this motion passed?
Brian, I'm going to, that question, I'm going to count it towards your question time, okay? So Superintendent, Superintendent Merrick? Superintendent Merrick, do you have some numbers or Director Daley? Director Daley, I'll pass it to Director Daley.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, it really depends on two things, I would say, trustee O'Brien. If we're looking at the cost of a flag, an additional flag per school, it'd be approximately thirty dollars per flag. So somewhere around sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars. If we're talking about installing an additional flagpole at all of our schools, an additional flagpole would, at each school would be somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars.
So, Mr. Chair.
Hold up. Okay, I'll give you a follow.
Director Daley, if this passes, what choice would you make since that is a procedural decision? I believe.
Well, I, I, I don't, I would suggest that we would fly the Canadian flag and the pride flag on the same pole.
So, so that's how it would go?
That's how it could go, yes.
Well, you are the director. I wouldn't mind if you made it, if you could tell us now. That's a big difference in cost.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I still wouldn't mind the exact number. Is Superintendent Merrick here?
Hold on, let me just check the Director Daley. Do you?
I'm assuming Ryan's on, on, on the line. I would assume he'd get the same numbers I did, but I'll certainly defer to Superintendent Merrick if, if he's still in the meeting.
Superintendent Merrick, are you there?
I am here. I am here, yes. Yeah, so it's the same number. So it's, the Canada flags that we currently buy are about thirty dollars each. And to install a new flagpole at a school, which we do from time to time if there's damage to flagpoles at our current schools, it's about five thousand dollars to install a new flagpole. If that's the route that trustees chose here tonight.
But that is, that's not part of the motion. That would be a procedural decision, right? Director Daley?
Director Daley?
Yeah, I would agree. The, the direction in the motion is to fly the pride flag at each school in the board and at the CEC. So I would say that we would fly both the Canadian flag and the pride flag on existing flagpoles.
Thank you, Director Daley. Thank you, trustee O'Brien.
Further question? Just one further question, Mr. Chair.
Can I put in the, can I put you in the queue?
Sure, Mr. Chair, no worries.
Okay, we have trustee Yantamasi now, and he's done his three minutes. So trustee Yantamasi, do you have a question?
Mr. Chair, are we still in debate here on this particular motion?
Yeah, you have finished your debate. You were the first speaker.
Mr. Chair, I asked a specific question. My specific question is, are we still under debate? Yes or no?
No.
So what are we doing? If we're not debating this, what are we doing?
You have your hand up here, and I'm wondering if you have a question on this topic. If you have a question on this topic, I'll allow you. Otherwise, we can end debate, and trustee O'Brien is next on the list.
Mr. Chair, I asked, if you're allowing questions on a matter that pertains to a motion, that would constitute debate. So I'm asking you to certify to me that we're still under debate because I have a matter to deal with.
So the debate is done. You have your three minutes is done. Your question will be clarifying on the motion that you see here. Do you have any clarifying question on the motion?
I have, Mr. Chair, I have the following. I wish to refer this matter to Bishop Crosby for input. And the reason for that is that this particular motion speaks to the identity of Catholic education, Catholic values, faith formation, which is central to Catholic education. Without his input, as we seek his input for the naming of schools, I would submit to you and to my colleague trustees that we seek guidance from Bishop Crosby. So I put forward that this matter be referred to him for input because he is the head of the Hamilton Diocese, to whom we look to for direction on matters that are faith-filled and require their interpretation of what hal and what this means to Catholic education.
I'm hearing that you move to, you're moving a motion to send this to the diocese, the bishop's office. Is that correct?
That is part of our ten point nine recognition of motions on a matter under debate, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this?
I'll second it.
Give me a second. I just want to check some facts out here. Trustee, trustee Yantamasi. You do not have anything in our policy to refer to the bishop's office. You can move to postpone.
No, Mr. Chair, I draw your attention to ten point nine, to refer. To refer means you can refer back to staff, you can refer to the law, you can refer to anybody. Refer is generic.
Okay, give me a second. Let me just consult with parliamentarian Kapoor. Parliamentarian Kapoor, could you advise on this?
Yes, Chair. You can hear me?
Yes.
Chair, you cannot refer to a person or body that is outside of your control because you cannot require them to report back to you. That's why, as you've said, the alternative would be to postpone the matter until, to postpone the matter and seek His Excellency's opinion. Again, you can't force His Excellency to give you an opinion. That's, you're requesting it. It's up to him. So you can postpone it to a certain, the best I'd, I'd suggest that you, if this is the motion, the intent, that you postpone it to a certain time to allow or request for, to His Excellency for his opinion. But you cannot refer to someone.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Kapoor. Trustee Yantamasi.
For the naming of the speaker.
Trustee Yantamasi.
The floor, Mr. Chair.
You do not have the floor. Trustee Yantamasi, you do not have the floor. So trustee Yantamasi, I've heard the opinion from the parliamentarian, which is correct. You cannot force somebody to give us an opinion. So the motion, your, your amendment as it stands now is, I would say. So the motion, your, your amendment as it stands now is, I would suggest that you change it to postpone. Uh, otherwise, the motion is, stands it out, is out of order. So what's your choice? Would you like to postpone it?
Mr. Chair, you're, you're incorrect, and so is the parliamentarian. We refer the naming of schools for the consult, the, His Excellency. We refer. We do not, as you just suggested, postpone. We refer. So recognized procedure.
Trustee Yanto Massey, as a point of order, you will stop. Trustee Guzo, state a point of order.
If trustees are dissatisfied with your rulings, then they have a process to appeal. But to make comments that somebody is wrong, or the parliamentarian or the chair is wrong, the mechanism is to file an appeal.
Thank you, trustee Guzo. Your point of order is well received. Trustee Yanto Massey. I, I did state very clearly the options that are available to you. You mentioned about naming policy for schools. We have a policy in place, which is very clear about it. Okay, so you have two options, either to postpone this motion to some time, or I will have to rule it out of order. So it's your choice at this point in time, uh, and my ruling is the old. Trustee, trustee Yanto Massey, I give you two choices. Trustee Yanto Massey, I give you two choices. Either you make a change.
I understand you're giving me two choices, Mr. Chair, but I am asking for a point of clarification, which does not speak to your two choices. My point of clarification, what is the process that we use when we refer the naming of schools to His Excellency?
We have a policy, trustee Yanto Massey, we have a policy in place which clearly outlines how that is to be handled.
But it's a referral, is it not, Mr. Chair?
But that's recommended by a policy. We do not have a policy.
So let's change it. I'm moving.
Trustee Yanto Massey, we are not getting into discussion or debate. We are going to stay focused.
I'm saying, I'm moving to.
You do not have the, you do not have that option, trustee Yanto Massey.
I just said. Are you, are you at time delay? Are you listening to me, Mr. Chair?
Stop interrupting.
Trustee Yanto Massey, I've given you two options. Am I clear about it? We have one option which you can exercise, and that's to postpone. The second option is, is I call it out of order, because we do not have authority on the diocese, okay? So what, what option do you want to choose? Trustee Yanto Massey, I have the floor. I've not given you the floor as yet. So you have two options, okay? I'm now going to ask you in a very clear way, for the third time, what are your choices? You have two choices.
So, Mr. Chair, I will draw your attention to two point nine on their motion to postpone to a later time. In brackets, it states, "defer." Please read your bylaws.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien, trustee Yanto Massey. So are you agreeing to postpone, or should I call this out of order?
Mr. Chair, postpone.
I have given you two choices.
I bring that to your attention. So I will postpone if you would like to use postpone.
Thank you, trustee. Oh, you like to use postpone? Okay, sounds good.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. So we have a motion, a few amendments to the main motion, uh, moved by trustee Yanto Massey, seconded by Ryan. Trustee Yanto Massey, the motion is on view. Can you give us a date?
Um, till the second week in February, or our second meeting in February, Mr. Chair.
So let's put a date to that. We have the second week of Feb. fifteenth. Is that acceptable?
Mr. Chair, it's perfect.
Thank you. So this is the motion to postpone definitely. We have a second, we have, it's amendable, and you can debate it. So trustee Yanto Massey, you have the, no, I think trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee O'Brien. So trustee Yanto Massey, you have the floor. You have five minutes to talk to this. I'm going to start the new speakers list. Go ahead, trustee Yanto Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, uh, trustee Yanto Massey, my mistake. You can only debate the date, right? So trustee Yanto Massey, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't debating anything. You asked me to speak to it.
No, so only the date. My mistake. I'm learning. Go ahead. So I'm not hearing anything, trustee Yanto Massey. Are you good with that date? Should we just take it to a vote, or?
Uh, I said that was perfect. Obviously, you didn't hear me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We shall take it to a recorded vote. So your motion to postpone to fifteenth, you see it on your screen, moved and seconded.
Mr. Chair, point of order, can you state why I've asked to be postponed, so that it goes into the rest of the records? Thank you.
Trustee Yanto Massey, the motion to postpone is upfront in the screen, and that will go into the record. Okay, uh, so I call the vote now. Trustee De Rosa, how do you vote? Trustee De Rosa?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, what am I voting on?
You're voting on the amendment to the main motion that we see on your screen. Trustee Yanto Massey has requested or put an amendment to postpone until Feb. fifteenth, to seek the input of Bishop Crosby.
Yeah, I think that's also a good idea to get the clergy's direction, so I would support it.
I've called a vote. How do you vote, trustee?
I vote in favor.
Trustee Guzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Yanto Massey?
In favor of Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carivella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor, considering how.
Trustee Oharn Zanata?
And how important it is to get some.
Trustee Oharn, trustee Oharn Zanata?
Yeah, I'm opposed. Thank you.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Masri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiba?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is opposed. It's four in favor, five opposed. The amendment fails. So we are going back to the main motion. On the speakers list is trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. Uh, Director Daly, I'm sorry if I was short on last line of questioning. Um, question to Director Daly, is it not against protocol to fly two flags on the same pole? I mean, with the Canadian flag. I know the public board does that, but it doesn't not go against protocol? I'm just asking.
Sorry, Ian. Through you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Director Daly, sorry, it's late.
I mean, I could be wrong.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'd have to, I'd have to pull up flag protocol um, from the federal government, but protocol and etiquette are not law. They're protocol and etiquette.
And I, I understand that. And, Mr. Chair, sorry.
This is sorry, trustee O'Brien. I, I was just going to say, I do know that other boards that have, um, uh, flown two flags on the pole, uh, have, or at least I know one board that's reached out to, uh, that federal government department, and, I don't want to say got the okay, but, um, it is protocol. It's, it's not, it's not legal requirement.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. You have a follow-up?
I do, and thank you through Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew, if she's willing to answer this. So it could be, the cost of this could be eighteen hundred dollars, or it could be fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, trustee Agnew, and I totally respect your right not to answer this if you don't want to. If you had the choice of spending that money on Chromebooks for students or this motion, what would be your choice?
Uh, vice chair.
I, I, I totally respect trustee Agnew's.
Yeah, I'm not going to engage in that conversation or answer that, but thank you for the question.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you for your honesty, trustee Agnew.
We shall now go down. I have again trustee Yanto Massey on the speakers list. Trustee Yanto Massey, your question, please.
Uh, you've already called on me, Mr. Chair. I, I do not. I have my hand up.
Thank you, thank you. We, uh, have had, had debate questions, and.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair, I have my hand in the chat.
Sorry, who's that?
Uh, trustee Bowie.
Uh, you had your debate, right? You have questions? One second. I don't see your name. Okay, but trustee Bowie, go ahead.
Yes, my question, um, was sort of echoing trustee O'Brien's question. But, um, upon doing my own research ahead of this meeting, um, I did read that the Waterloo District School Board did reach out to Heritage Canada about protocol with flying the Canadian flag, and the Canadian government has stated that, um, in cases where it is, uh, where schools only have one flagpole on which to fly flags, it is acceptable for, uh, schools to fly the pride flag underneath the Canadian flag. Is that, uh, is that sort of in concordance with what you've heard?
Uh, Director Daly?
Yes, that's correct.
Any follow-up question, trustee Bowie?
Nope, that's perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have, I see the hand of trustee De Rosa. I shall give trustee De Rosa your question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm quietly listening to the deliberations. The voice that keeps coming back to me is the benefit of the doubt that the young student asked me to provide. Um, you know, I'm distressed that, to the, to the point where the clergy has not weighed in or been given an opportunity to weigh in, and certainly I don't feel necessarily competent.
Trustee De Rosa, your question, please. Trustee De Rosa, your question, please. We finished debate. Your question? Do you have a question?
Um, Mr. Chair, I'll pass my turn. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, once again, I see trustee Yanto Massey's hand. Trustee Yanto Massey, your question, please.
Mr. Chair, um, through you, um, back, um, April, I think the beginning of April, I sent secretary Daly a fulsome policy on how we should proceed insofar as flying flags equit, I, I, I'm leading to my question, Mr. Chair. If you allow me to speak, then I can get to my question.
Go ahead.
Um, the purpose of which was to address equitability. Um, if we reserve the whole month of June to the two S L G T B Q, we will then exclude our indigenous people whose month of June is also history month for them. And there are our Portuguese friends, there are our Italian friends who also celebrate in the month of June, whereby they do this by flying the flags. So my question to secretary Daly is as follows. How do we deal with all the requests that will be coming in equitably? If we reserve this particular flying of the L G T B Q flag the whole month of June?
Uh, Director Daly?
Um, I, I guess that's a hypothetical question, because, um, to my knowledge, um, we haven't been inundated with, with calls to fly flags during the month of June. Uh, we don't have a flag policy or procedure. So that's a difficult question to answer. Um, I, I think I'd leave it at that. That's a difficult question to, to answer.
Thank you, Director Daly. Uh, trustee Yanto Massey?
I have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So, um, back in April of last year, um, I can't remember the gentleman's name, representing our indigenous people, uh, did ask that their flag be flown. They were the first ones for the month of June uh, in celebration of Indigenous History Month. How do we address that now, since they were first to ask for it? And it got sent, every trustee was copied.
Trustee Yanto Massey, uh, the questions that should be coming up at this particular point in time is regarding the motion on the floor. Uh, what you are asking is something different, so I will not allow that question at this point in time, and we move on down the speakers list to trustee Murphy. Uh, we have a couple of speakers who have not spoken. Trustee Murphy, trustee Guzo, trustee De Rosa have spoken many times. Uh, I think it's time to call the vote soon, uh, but trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I have a question. Um, I'll, I'll go to, uh, Director Daly, but maybe, maybe somebody else can answer it. Uh, I recall last year that Bishop Crosby did issue a letter that was sent to us. And I, I don't, I'm not going to paraphrase the context, because, uh, I may be, I may be wrong. But is it possible to look through our archives and find that letter and circulate that to all trustees?
Director Daly?
I, I guess I, just to clarify, um, trustee Murphy, do you mean right now?
No.
No, and I don't mean that facetiously, like I.
Well, I get a little stiffy.
No, no, I'm not. I, I, I just.
No, 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 I think, uh, just for, just for everybody's, uh, reference, to put everybody's mind at ease, that Bishop Crosby has in fact, uh, provided his guidance in this matter.
Thank you. Trustee, uh, Murphy, you have a follow-up question?
Uh, no, that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Guzo, uh, your questions, please.
Thank you, through Mr. Chair. I'm asking you to call the vote.
Thank you, uh, trustee Guzo.
Mr. Chair, will you allow me something else?
I believe I, I believe I, that we can actually ask for it.
Trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, I've given you, I have a list here which I'm maintaining, and you had a couple of chances to, to ask.
Not as many, not as much as other people, but I would like to, I would like to make a comment, with respect to the trustee Murphy suggestion.
Trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, hold on, hold on. I'll give you the last question, and then I have a comment to make. I have a comment to make, and then we'll take it to a vote, okay? So trustee De Rosa, you have the floor for your question.
Yes, um, to, to trustee Murphy's point, uh, Bishop Crosby did, did provide some guidance. And if I recall, uh, there was some guidance from the clergy with respect to alternative, um, for lack of a better word, compromised flags. Is that something that the assembly would like to consider? I remember making that, presenting a compromised, uh, flag forward that sought to seek, um, a feasible middle point. Um, I would be happy to provide, to, to put that forward as a, as an amendment to this motion, um, if you would allow me.
I'll second that.
Uh, sorry, can you repeat your question, trustee, uh, De Rosa? I missed that part.
Yeah, with respect to the discussion around Bishop Crosby's direction and the letter, I think it's important to consider the, the clergy's input into this, and certainly they, they opined into this discussion last year, uh, to the point where there was a, there was a flag that was proposed that recognized the sacred heart of Jesus and the inclusivity. Uh, I remember in that motion that I had put forward a compromise, which, uh, for whatever reason, uh, was not accepted. Is this something that we are prepared to entertain?
So trustee De Rosa, we already ruled on the motion to postpone, and it, it failed, so.
I'm not asking about postponement. I'm, I'm asking about modification of the motion, the one that we have in the front of us. We have not voted yet, Mr. Mr. Chair.
It was, it wasn't Bishop.
Mr. Chair, I put this forward as a, to come to a consensus.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Trustee, uh, De Rosa, we are getting into debate again, and I, I will not allow this. We finished debate. We have finished questions, and I, I said that we are going to close debate. I have a comment to make. I have a comment to make. Trustee O'Brien?
Chair, but just clarification, did trustee De Rosa put forward an amendment? I'm just wanting clarification on that.
Yeah, he tried to put an amendment, but it, we already discussed that, and, uh, question time is now ended. Yeah, he tried to put an amendment, but it, it, we already discussed that and, uh, question time is now ended. Uh, I have a comment to make and then I'm taking it to a vote. Okay, so, uh, I'm not getting, getting into debate. I have a comment to make and I'll just, uh, read my statement. As a trustee, my goal has always been student success. Our students are our future. And I will be there to support the genuine needs of all our students. The same holds true for all our staff. Our pillars are achieve, believe and belong, which strongly align with Catholic teachings. And as members of this community, we must proactively open our eyes and ears and extend our hand to every member who needs our support or who is falling through the cracks in our system. This is undoubtedly our calling. In speaking with and receiving emails from a large cross-section of great peers, last time and now, I see that there is a lot of information and misinformation and misrepresentation. And it's clear to me that, uh, there's not going to be any agreement.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
However, however, we may have many, this is not debate.
Matter.
Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You do not have the floor. However, we may have many important items and we need to look at the big picture Catholic education to keep an open, positive and constructive mind and forge ahead. By this, I'm not saying that we should change our individual core faiths and belief or modify, water down teachings in the Bible, impose our beliefs on others or let others impose their views on us. We must understand that each individual is unique, recognize our differences and respect each other. I had, I had been a stakeholder and a very active member with this board for over 13 years. And my children have gone through this wonderful system and my wish is to make it better. So if at all I'm ever called to vote tonight, I will ask myself, what would Jesus want to me, want me to do? And with that, I shall now call the vote. Uh, Vice Chair Agnew, how do you vote? You're voting on the main motion? Oh, I need, sorry, uh, trustee, Vice Chair Agnew, you need to close debate on the main motion.
I don't need, I'm fine. I'm fine to take the vote, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I shall now call the vote again. Vice Chair Agnew, how do you vote?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Uh, trustee De Rosa?
Mr. Chair, I'm giving a, a student the benefit of the doubt tonight. I will, I will vote in favor.
Trustee Guzo, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Yan Tomasi, how do you vote? Trustee Yan Tomasi?
I'm against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Caribella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanata?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
So it's five in favor, three opposed. The motion carries. Which, so the, uh, we are not extending. So we shall now move to item. We shall now move to the closing prayer. Trustee Vice Chair Agnew, please leave us in closing prayer.
I just have trouble pulling it up here, so bear with me for one moment. Just had too many tabs open. Uh, please join me in the Son of our Faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Father of justice, your gift to us with your creation so that we can participate with it through the work of our hands, heart, feet and intellect. God, as you did your son, Jesus Christ, in our vocation, we may build community and not hinder it. Give us the courage to shut up from the mountaintops against those who violate your goodness by exploring the work of others. Let us work to be signs of hope for those who seek decency and fairness. We ask this through the power of the Holy Spirit, your gift to assist us in building your kingdom. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.